Okay, Mayor, we're ready.
All right. Here we go. Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Oxnard City Council meeting. The date is May 19th, 2020, and the City Council will be entering closed session before the beginning of the regularly scheduled meeting at 5:00 PM. We have an appointment item. And so we'll have the city clerk take the role, please.
Councilwoman Basua.
I'm muted.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember McDonald?
Here.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Here.
Councilmember Perello?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Flynn?
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum, and the agenda for this meeting was posted in the City Hall kiosk on Thursday, May 7th, with an amendment posted on Thursday, May 14th.
Thank you very much. The City Council has one closed-session item, and I'll read a statement prior to entering closed session. "The City Council will recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957A to consult with Stephen Fisher, City Attorney, and Keith Brooks, Chief Information Officer, regarding a threat to public services or facilities." Madam City Clerk, I'm not actually looking at the speakers on the agenda items right now. Are there any speakers on this item?
No, there are not.
Okay.
I'm not able to hear.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mayor Protem?
I didn't hear that.
Okay. Okay, we'll now recess to closed session, and we will start our regularly scheduled meeting at 5:00 PM for the appointment item.
Can't hear you.
Okay. Good. And have you started?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Oxnard City Council meeting. The date is May 19th, 2020. The City Council just emerged from closed session, and we'll have the city attorney make any announcements if necessary. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mayor. The council was briefed on a recent ongoing threat to city services, and there were no actions taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to the appointment item and the very first topic. Topic number one is Cultural and Community Services Department. The subject is renaming of La Colonia Boxing Gym. And this recommendation is that the City Council adopt a resolution renaming La Colonia Boxing Gym to La Colonia Boxing Gym Dr. Manuel Lopez Youth Center. And this was approved by the Community Services Committee, three to zero. And we'll have Terrell Harrison give a presentation, please. Actually, Janice Saragosa. I'm sorry, Janice.
No worries. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, good evening. I'm Janice Saragosa, Recreation Coordinator. Tonight, I'll be presenting on the renaming of the La Colonia Boxing Gym to the La Colonia Boxing Gym Dr. Manuel Lopez Youth Center. So this is just a brief overview of the renaming process. In 2019, a request was made to rename the La Colonia Boxing Gym after Dr. Manuel Lopez. On December 11th, 2019, the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission unanimously voted to recommend the name change. And on April 14th, 2020, the Community Services Committee unanimously voted to recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution renaming the gym La Colonia Boxing Gym Dr. Manuel Lopez Youth Center. And here's an overview of Dr. Lopez's commitment to our community. He was elected to City Council in 1978. He became mayor in 1992. He served on council until 2004. And you can read the whole list of commissions and boards he sat on, but as you may know, this is in a complete list. It's just a brief overview. So Dr. Lopez was always an advocate for youth programming, especially youth boxing. In 1994, he led the effort to approve $250,000 to renovate the boxing gym. There's a Los Angeles Times quoted at the time, as you could see on the slide, in 2019. "The Lopez family pledged to donate $1,000 towards fixing the boxing gym roof." So here's a recommendation before you. It's to rename the boxing gym, the La Colonia Boxing Gym Dr. Manuel Lopez Youth Center. Do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation. And madam city clerk, I know that you sent me the list of, let me just make sure I got it. There it is. Okay, I'm gonna see if there are any speakers on this item. And there are actually two speakers. The very first speaker is Barbara McRae Ortiz, to be followed by Manuel Herrera.
Hi, Barbara. It's the City Council meeting.
Yeah, I'm here this time.
Okay, great. Well, you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say this, support this item because for the entire time I've been in Oxnard, I have dealt with the former mayor. He was a great asset to Oxnard. We're gonna miss him. I think he really had a heart for the people and a soul for the people. And I think this is a good memorial to him, particularly because of his love of boxing and how he used to support it over the years. So I would support this 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna dial the next speaker, Manuel Lopez. I'm sorry, Manuel Herrera.
Hello?
Hi, Manuel. It's Michelle from the City Council meeting.
Yes.
Hi, you've got three minutes, so please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Flynn, Mayor Protem Ramirez, members of the City Council, city manager and staff. My name is Manuel Herrera, Manuel Herrera. I'm the founder of Citizens for a Better Oxnard. However, I'm here to speak to you tonight as the former president of La Colonia Youth Boxing Association. You have in front of you a resolution to rename La Colonia Boxing Gym by adding the name of former Mayor Dr. Manuel Lopez. With this resolution, the new name will be La Colonia Boxing Gym/Dr. Manuel Lopez Youth Center. As you can see, we are keeping intact the historic and world-renowned name La Colonia Boxing Gym and just adding the name of Dr. Lopez. When I first proposed this, it was because Dr. Lopez was facing some serious health issues, and because of his many, many years of supporting the gym and its youth, and because he was very instrumental in helping us secure the funds back in the day to keep the gym open, I felt he deserved this honor. Our goal was to have him be present for this honor, but unfortunately, fate had a different plan. I can go on and on about what a great leader he was and why he deserves this, but I'm sure you already know that. My hope is that you will agree with me and many of our citizens by passing this resolution. Before I go, I also wanted to thank Terrell Harrison and his staff for their outstanding help during this process. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
That's it for the colors, Mayor. He's not muted. You can see the icon.
Mr. Mayor, are you speaking?
I'm here.
Oh, okay. Yeah, he's having a problem. Mayor, you may have to log out and log back in again. It looks like your sound got dropped.
Carmen, can you hear?
I can. I could not hear Tim, though.
Okay. Manal?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Very good. Okay, I'm sorry. So in terms of the speaker request, I have Councilman Madrigal first?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. All I really wanted to state was same thing I stated at the committee meeting, that that gym means so much to a lot of people in the community, in the neighborhood of La Colonia, and actually outside the neighborhood as well. Many young boys and girls have gone to that gym for boxing, for training, and they've come out better people for it. It's taught them discipline, and it's taught them respect, and it's something to be admired. And hopefully, you know, this boxing gym stays, you know, giving back to many kids in our community for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Perello, you had something quickly to mention.
Yes. I would just like to add on Slide 3, when we listed his, the various entities that he's, Mr. Dr. Lopez had been involved in, he also was the elected member for the Oxnard Harbor District, which is a significant piece of work that affects a tremendous amount of people in the city of Oxnard. And I support this. Mr. Lopez, Dr. Lopez had always, when I first attended council meetings, there would always be recognition of various people that had fought and brought acclaim to the city of Oxnard. I do have a question. There have been reports in the newspaper that there are requests to name other public sites after individuals. And what is the policy? I mean, is there multiple sites that can be named after an individual? Or is there a specific policy? Because I don't want to jeopardize any activities going forward, but I would like to know the policy. And the only reason, there are only so many public buildings and facilities in the community. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perello, there is a resolution, number 12991, that was adopted by the council in January of 2006 that sets forth the current policy for the naming of city parks and other public facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it appears I don't have any additional requests to speak by members of the council, unless they...
I did wish to speak, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem?
Just very quickly, I will totally endorse everything that has been said about Dr. Lopez. I think all of us knew him personally. I certainly did. He is a person well-deserving of this honor, and I think more honors. And I have, in the past, expressed interest in seeing our library named after him because he was instrumental in pressing forward and having it built against some significant opposition, I understand, for the children of our city particularly. And he contributed a lot of, not just moral support, but financial support. But that is still to come. So I wanna, I wanna be the one to move this item forward. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, great. And no further comments? Just double-check here, because I didn't get that request from anyone else. Oh, madam city clerk, before we take the vote, we do have a motion by Mayor Protem and a second by Councilman McDonald. I'll just say that I believe it's 24 years that Dr. Lopez served on the Oxnard City Council. It's hard not to think about him in particular and his accomplishments. There are so numerous accomplishments. So obviously, he shared something obviously in common, that both he served as a councilman and then later as mayor. And I just, I see him, he spoke openly, but his, the influence that he had on the community and on people was very strong. And this is an excellent example of one of them, and Mayor Protem has mentioned other examples. So I think it's high time that we do this. And madam city clerk, we do have a motion. The vote, please.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Perello?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Mayor Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
The motion to approve carries seven to zero.
On to the next item on the agenda, and this is timely, and that's from the Police Department. The subject, the report on the Police Department's fireworks enforcement prevention efforts. And the recommendation is that the City Council receive a verbal report on the Police Department's enforcement and education efforts related to illegal fireworks. And I think that Assistant Police Chief Zonstegard will be presenting, and I don't know if Chief Whitney is here to say something first, or do we start with you, Assistant Chief Zonstegard?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It's me. I'm doing a little cleanup of the podium here, so give me one second.
Thank you.
Doing my due diligence here.
Okay.
So, welcome, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak in front of you. It's always my pleasure. I do want to speak to you tonight on our fireworks efforts in Oxnard. This is gonna be an update, and I'm like, I don't even know where to look. I just need to look ahead, I guess. It's very confusing. Okay. There's no action needed by the City Council, but I'm gonna give an overview of our efforts from last year, the challenges that we continue to face, and then I can take any questions after the presentation. So, start kinda where we start every year, and that is that fireworks are prohibited in Oxnard. And we can't say it enough, particularly with some of the issues that we face in 2020 with the COVID virus and how our city resources are stretched thin. We cannot emphasize this point enough, that fireworks are prohibited. They are illegal. They are not allowed. And we want that word to get out. We have several Oxnard City codes that allow for us to enforce the possession of fireworks. There are safe and sane fireworks, and then there are dangerous fireworks. And you can see that the fines run up to $1,000. In 2018, the City Council passed a social host ordinance that allows us, if we identify residences where fireworks, illegal fireworks are being fired off from, and we do our diligence in an investigation, we can actually cite the property owner for allowing fireworks to be set off at their residence. Talk a little bit about our pre-holiday preparations last year, and then this year, we will replicate almost all of them. We put news releases out in English and Spanish. We use our mobile message trailers. We have a finite number of those, and they are deployed in several locations right now related to the COVID virus, so we'll have to be flexible in how we utilize those this year. We have a series of public service announcements that we do every year regarding fireworks. We continue to use social media, and there's a slide that you'll see with some of the things we've done there, both Facebook, Nextdoor, Instagram, and Twitter. We have a fireworks hotline and also an email that allows for the reporting of residences or locations where there are illegal fireworks. We had 47 tips called in last year. Just as a comparison, in 2018, we had 170. So we do wanna encourage people to report illegal fireworks, but as you'll see with some of the other figures, just our fireworks in general last year were down from the previous years. I'll talk in a little bit about residence letters. We sent 66 of those, and then we do very specific civil citation training for officers. So I'm gonna talk a little more expansively about some of these things in the following slides. So we do put news releases out. Last year, we issued our news releases on June 4th. We're looking to do those in the next week or so, really getting people to start thinking about the fact that we do not want illegal fireworks in Oxnard. You can see the social media postings. We do them on all of our social media platforms. We use a variety of different methods, whether it's videos from some of our uniformed personnel. You see a picture of a dog up there, because we know the impact that the illegal fireworks have on our pet population in Oxnard. So I would say over the next 45 days, you're gonna see a lot of social media postings about fireworks and the impact they have on our community. Each year, we identify particular locations, and a vast majority of them are residences, where we have had problems in the past with illegal fireworks, and we will be proactive, and we will send warning letters to these residences. Basically, just states that your residence has been identified in the past as a potential location for illegal fireworks. We tell them what the Oxnard City Code section is and tell them what's going to happen if this behavior continues. So there's really no excuse when the time comes and we do have to come to their residence. They know what the rules are, and they don't have any real ability to say, "We didn't know fireworks were illegal." We do civil citation training, and this is so we, all of our officers that are working out in the field know what sections to use, how to fill the citations out correctly. With our body-worn cameras, we're able to gather really good video evidence with those cameras that allow for successful enforcement of those civil citations after July 4th. So let's talk a little bit about July 4th last year. And again, from year to year, there aren't drastic changes in how we approach this, but I will talk about a couple of those changes. You can see the heavy resource-intensive efforts that occur on July 4th. Last year, we had 102 sworn police officers working on July 4th, 13 civilian employees working throughout the day. We had 1,249 calls into our dispatch center. That was down about 160 from 2018. And then the next item you can see is the number of fireworks disturbances. So we had 377 fireworks disturbances reported on just one day, July 4th. That seems like a lot, but if you see the numbers from the three years prior to that, that was nearly 100 less than 2018. We issued 32 fireworks citations on July 4th and the days leading up to July 4th. Talk a little bit about fireworks enforcement, specifically our sections. You have to actually see the person in possession of the fireworks. And so sometimes, an officer may be down the street, there's a large group of individuals, and fireworks go off in the middle of the street. We can go down there, we can contact the individuals, we can certainly confiscate any illegal fireworks, but sometimes it's not as easy as some might think in determining who had actual possession of the fireworks. So that's why some might think that those citation numbers might be higher, but it is quite difficult to issue these citations. We had approximately 170 pounds of illegal fireworks seized, and we work with our brothers and sisters at the Oxnard Fire Department, and they help with the destruction of those items. So the fireworks by the sea last year had 35,000 to 40,000 attendees, and we know for a couple of different reasons that that event is not going to happen this year. So I know I've been asked, and several people in the Police Department have been asked, "How do you think that's going to impact, you know, the illegal fireworks activity in Oxnard?" I can tell you my opinion. I think, I don't have any, like, specific data to support this. I generally think that the two activities are somewhat separate. I don't really think that the fireworks by the sea event being canceled is suddenly going to raise the level of illegal fireworks activity in the city. I hope I don't get proven wrong on that, but that's just my experience, having worked a multitude of July fours over the last 25 years. So let's talk a little bit about the challenges that we face in Oxnard specifically. This is a slide of the different cities in California that allow for fireworks to be purchased. And they may be illegal in Oxnard, they may be illegal in Ventura, but it's not difficult to get them. Most of us know through our experience that Fillmore generally has a large amount of fireworks stands along the Highway 126. I actually spoke with the chief of police out there earlier today, and those stands are closed as it stands right now, and they're clearly deemed a nonessential service. And unless something changes with the county health order, they don't anticipate those stands opening anytime soon. So that would certainly be beneficial to us in Oxnard, because I think, I don't have any, like, data to support it, but it's my belief that a fair amount of the illegal fireworks are purchased over in the city of Fillmore. This is just a map, and I know it's kinda small, but it just shows you basically that fireworks are everywhere. So we do not have the ability to focus our efforts on, like, a particular neighborhood. You can see they stretch from the beach to the east side, to the north side, to the south side. So it's just, it's a very pervasive issue as we get closer to July 4th. Last year, the Oxnard Fire Department responded to several, like, nuisance fires. There weren't any reports of significant fires, but it did keep the Oxnard Fire Department busy dealing with that. We had two very significant fireworks-related incidents in 2019. I was on scene at both of these incidents. Very tragic. We had the death of a 20-year-old young man down on Quested Omar. He was firing a mortar-type firework off the roof of an apartment complex, and it came up and struck him in the head, and he ultimately succumbed to those injuries. And then we had an individual over in the whole Ileton neighborhood that, basically, a firework blew up in his hand, and he lost at least one finger. You know, very tragic for the family of the individual down on Quested Omar, and just another in a series of examples of why illegal fireworks are just bad news. So some of the other challenges, this is an issue that our community is not on one side or the other. They basically, you know, we encounter many people who are extremely upset at the Police Department for enforcing fireworks ordinances. Last year, we met several groups of individuals, 20, 30, 40, 50 people, that were hostile towards our officers. On a couple of occasions, they actually were firing fireworks at our uniformed officers. Many people just don't think it's dangerous. They think it's just part of America and celebrating Independence Day, and they believe they should be allowed to fire the illegal fireworks off. And then coupled with that, and you know, I put this slide together long before the COVID crisis, so you wanna talk about competing priorities. I have up there resources allocated to address violent crime, DUI, loud party calls, but COVID has brought us several new chapters, and whether it's our beaches, our business compliance, or parks, or trying to protect our workforce with, you know, PPE and protective equipment. So, you know, enforcing fireworks, to be very candid, is not high on the list of things that we want to be doing. We want to be addressing a lot of other issues that are facing our city, but we're basically forced to do that when our, when our community members continue to use the illegal fireworks. And then finally, a new tool for 2020, we have, we do have a highly functional unmanned aircraft system unit, or a drone unit now. Been extremely successful in a variety of different operations throughout the city. And we do plan on implementing the drones to respond to calls for service and the potential of the enforcement of the social host ordinance. So if we're able to get a good evidentiary video footage of people shooting fireworks off in front of their house, or in their driveway, or out of their garage, then we will utilize that tool, and I think it could be beneficial in enforcing some of our city code ordinances. So, so again, I just, I wanna conclude with, you know, we get a ton of complaints every year about fireworks, but they aren't on one side. We get complaints about why we're enforcing it, and then we get complaints about why we're not. So it's definitely a challenge for the Police Department in trying to... So it's definitely a challenge for the Police Department in trying to balance the needs and wants of our community, but the fact of the matter is that the fireworks are illegal, and the more that we're able to message that to our residents in our community, we hope to really bring down the amount of calls for service, and really the stretch of resources that we have over the next forty-five days as we lead up to July 4th. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that is the end of my presentation. I'd be more than happy to address any questions that anybody has.
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate Assistant Chief Zonstegard's presentation, and it certainly poses some very important questions to the City Council, and I'm sure there will be some comments and questions. Let me just take a quick look here, and Madam City Clerk, it doesn't appear that we have any requests to speak on this item, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Why don't I go ahead and start with Councilman Marigold, please?
Okay, real quickly, Chief, thank you for the presentation. Since our big neighboring county is aiming for a July 4th reopening, do you feel that this is going to be, July 4th is going to become an even bigger party, so we may have a big issue with fireworks all throughout the city for probably a week or so in July?
So I can't, I don't know about, like, neighboring counties. I think we would be naive to think with what the, our community, our state, our nation has dealt with in the last two months, that as our restrictions begin to relax, there is a lot of pent-up, just, behavior, and people have been in their houses, they haven't had been able to do anything fun, so I think it's not a stretch to think that as some of the restrictions are relaxed, people are going to be looking for things to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Zonstegard, for that report. Every July 4th around, well, it starts happening before July 4th, and continues after I and all the other council members, I believe, received angry phone calls from people very upset about it, the fireworks going off, and usually the comment is, "It's only happening in a particular neighborhood." So I think it's really great to show the map where it's happening everywhere. It's certainly happening in my neighborhood here in Carriage Square. And I really appreciate reminding people that there are people that really can't tolerate those loud sounds, our veterans, people with PTSD that are living in our community, have served their country, and are trying to have a peaceful life, and it's very disturbing and even shattering. And of course, pets. Pets are extremely affected by this. They run away, it's a big day at the shelter because a lot of stray animals come in, and it's a lot, it's, you know, it's really not good. And then fires, people in neighborhoods will set them off, and by July, we're probably going to have a pretty hard, hot summer coming, and we just don't need the extra strain on our resources, both the police and fires. So I really appreciate this. I'm looking forward to the drone activity suppressing the desire to misbehave, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Perella?
Thank you very much, Assistant Chief Zonstegard. I have a question specifically on Slide 6, if we can put it back up. It says, the very first line of the first paragraph, the Oxnard, this is what it states, "The Oxnard Police Department received information that the above-listed address has been associated with illegal fireworks activity. Residents that are aware of illegal fireworks activity, how do they get ahold of you to give you these addresses?"
So when we put our press releases out and on social media, we have a tip line, as well as an email address, that will be heavily publicized throughout the month of June, so the people can just either call in or send an anonymous email, and that's where we get some of that information.
Thank you very much. And again, I totally agree with Mayor Protem. That time of the year, tremendous amount of calls to Councilmen complaining about what's been going on. It's really surprising there's no public comments on this item. It's actually kind of sad. With respect, Assistant Chief Zonstegard, with respect to the tickets and the citations, how successful are we, aren't collecting any revenues from the citations?
So historically, I can tell you that we, I wouldn't say we got an A in our success of that, but over the last twelve months, the city entered into, you know, an agreement with a new cost recovery service, and they have, they not only do these, but they do other types of civil citations, and we're very happy with them. So very confident that moving forward with this new partner that we have, that we're going to be a lot more successful in recovering those fines.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for the presentation. This is an item that is very hot to the residents that speak to me. Thank you. That's all I have here.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other requests to speak by members of the council, just checking. I'll just say a quick word about the onerous challenge here that the Police Department has. I mean, with over a hundred personnel from the Police Department that are attempting to enforce what obviously, as Mayor Protem just pointed out, is a, you know, the word pervasive was used by the Assistant Chief, it's all over the city. I mean, there are only a few areas, a few neighborhoods where, you know, the complaints aren't coming from, and so it's pervasive everywhere, and I can understand why. It was probably just as dangerous when I grew up as a kid as now, yet now, I think the fact and the unfortunate casualties that took place last year emphasize even more that this is definitely a public health and public safety issue. And what I'd like to say to the Assistant Chief and to my colleagues is that, I mean, to rely on a hundred people, and I'm not criticizing the Police Department for the fact that it's a hundred people, you really need almost the equivalent of maybe a thousand people to really start seeing suppression of this kind of behavior. And I'm wondering whether the city, again, it's a major undertaking, and, you know, I was thinking just now about, you know, the wages that it would cost, you know, to, you know, to have that many people out. I mean, the city might be spending, I'm just going to guess, between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars on the Fourth of July, trying to suppress people from using fireworks. So I'll just say an end, and say that, you know, during World War II, there were block captains. Block captains are used for a lot of different things, and in World War II, during World War II, block captains were able to make sure that residents had blinds on their windows so light wouldn't leak through, so that we would be potentially vulnerable to an attack on the United States mainland. And that was a very successful program, the block captains. And I know that there are downsides to trying to get civilians to not enforce, but I'm looking more at block captains in the context of just people going out and talking to people, and just saying, "Look, this isn't the right thing to do." Sometimes, a lot of kids, they just need an adult saying, "Hey, you guys," you know, just shaking their head, saying, "That's not the right thing to do." So I don't know how Assistant Chief Zonstegard, we could put that together, but at least it's something we can talk about, because, I mean, spending as much as we're already spending, you know, spending more to get a hundred fewer violations, you know, doesn't seem like the economy, the opportunity cost is there. So those are my only comments. Assistant Chief, have we considered something like that, or maybe using the Neighborhood Council system, or maybe as a way to get the Neighborhood Council, you know, citizen patrols activated again, that we might consider something like this?
We certainly have, and we integrate the Neighborhood Council in all of our communication efforts, and I do think that's a good idea. Just to be quite frank with you, the circumstances of 2020 probably don't lend to that strategy this year, but I think moving forward, I think you're on to something, and I think moving forward as we get through this crisis, I think there's something there that we could explore.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment here.
Yes.
Possibly the Council could take some action, or put a recommendation that we draft a letter to the city of Fillmore, requesting them not to sell fireworks. I think we've done that in the past, I think, but it might help. But the other thing is, as you mentioned, you know, what things were available when you were a kid. I'm a bit older. The things that are being shot off were not available when I was a kid. These are mortars. The individual that was killed was a mortar. These things are, there's, they call them safe and sane, and then they call them illegal fireworks. When Assistant Chief Zonstegard is talking about the amount of confiscated fireworks, there are tremendous rockets and mortars, highly explosive devices that are, people are bringing in and selling. This is a business, and they need to be nailed when this happens. I can say, specifically for myself and being my Neighborhood Council, when I was a member of the Neighborhood Council, and we went out at night to try to stop people from doing this, you end up running into a situation where, under the cover of darkness, people act entirely different than they do in daylight. And I can feel for the police officers going into an area, even as a police officer, you'll have a crowd accost the police officers, a degree of hooliganism under the cover of night. People get a lot braver and boisterous, a little bit of drinking, and everything goes a long way towards that. But I do agree, there's got to be something done, because one fatality is one too many. But the impact on people's quality of life is way overboard. I can speak specifically for an area in my district on the beach. Those people are really upset. There are residents in that area that have firework parties, it is well-known, they do not want to follow the rules, and that's why I asked about this letter, because I intend to pursue. The residents are complaining to contact the Police Department, give them the addresses. We put these people on notice, and we pursue it to the fullest extent of the law, and collect everything we can for the wrongdoers impacting the residents' lives. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Assistant Chief Zonstegard, for that excellent update, and I agree, 2020 might not be the time to start a citizen volunteer corps to be a part of this, but hopefully in the future, we can consider that. Thank you very much. And now we'll go to the third and final appointment item, and that is under the City Treasurer's Department, the subject Quarterly Investment Report for the period ending March 31st, 2020. Recommendations that the City Council receive and file a report, and we'll ask the City Treasurer, Mr. Molina, to give us a presentation. Mr. Molina?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for this opportunity to present the Quarterly Investment Report. Before I do that, I wanted to give a special thanks to Kevin Rieper and Michelle Ascension. After I submitted this on April 30th, they found, well, actually, Kevin found one error we needed to correct, and one issue that we discussed, and it was very good, and I'll mention those when I get to it. Today, just for your information, the city's general fund has eighty-three million, four-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents in the bank. That's very excessive to what we normally want. We want it normally down around five million, but we're keeping that money there for two reasons. One, the investments are at point zero, zero, one, two, and three for two, three, and four years, and the other one is to make sure that we have the thirty million dollars that's available when the CFO and I get together to decide when they want to book the loan from the enterprise funds. So if, okay, we had it first, well, you can go to the next slide, then, whoever, oh, I'm doing it, I guess, okay. So our goal, as always, is to invest a hundred percent of all available cash. We know that normally, we would like to retain only three million dollars in the bank account, and you heard that as of today, we have eighty-three million. So when we're looking at the details this time, you will see that the city's investment ratio has gone down from ninety-eight percent to ninety-five percent, and in the slide, we had the correct amount, but on the written agenda, we had the previous month's rate of ninety-eight percent, and that's where Kevin picked it up, and so we changed it. And I know we may look like nerds, and we're talking about three percent correction, but I feel good when I have another professional looking at it and coming up with that. In the general fund bank account as of March, the end of March, there was eleven million, two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand in the successor agency bank account, there was eight million, five-hundred-and-ninety-nine, I should say, eight million, five-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand, and workers' comp, there was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Parking citations at a hundred and sixty-five thousand for a total cash in bank as of the end of March of twenty million, two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. And you can see how already it was beginning to grow from the prior month. So when we get to the level of efficiency, because that's how you want to judge whether or not your investors are doing a good job and maximizing as much revenue as you can, because with the fact that we have a very limited ability to earn any kind of interest rates at all, like I said, point zero, zero, one, two, and three for two, three, four, and even five years, we need to try to maximize as much cash into the investment as we can. So as of, again, March, we had a total available of two-hundred-and-fifty-five-million, two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and forty-seven cents, of which, at that time, we saw earlier, we had eleven million, six-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and thirty-four cents that was in the bank, and that results in a ninety-five percent efficiency level, which I think is very good. And Eden Alomari and Martha Guerra, in particular, deserve tremendous thanks for the work they do in making sure that we are invested as size we are. After assuring that we have enough cash in order to pay our bills, then the next thing is, how much can we earn, and what are the rates that we can get? We want to get the best rates that are in the market. So as of March 20, as of March 2020, we had costs of the investments at two-hundred-and-forty-three million, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and thirteen cents. The par value is two-hundred-and-forty-three-million, six-hundred-and-ten, and you say, "Well, how is that possible?" Well, that's because when we're looking at these investments, we want to, as much as possible, buy them below par, and the difference between par and what we pay for is added income for the city. Now, the market value as of that same time period was two-hundred-and-forty-four-million, two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, and twenty dollars. So you can see that if we had to sell the investments as of that date, we would have actually earned, assuming we can sell in the market at the market value, we could have earned six-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. And that looks good, but for an investor, that's bad news, because what that's telling me is that the investments that I bought, you know, two, three, four years ago, have higher value than the investments I bought yesterday. But when you think of it, two, three, four, five years ago, a thousand dollars was generating five percent interest. Now, that same thousand dollars is generating point zero, 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 three percent interest. So you can see that it's tremendous loss in interest. That's why the older instruments are valued so highly. That's it. If you have any questions, and one other thing I did want to point out, Kevin and I have a slight disagreement, but I've agreed to his terms. We're looking at the length of the recession, and if you exclude the Great Depression, the average length of recessions go from eleven months to about one and a half to two years. But if you include the recession, the Great Depression, rather, then you have a time period that goes between two to three and a half years of time that the recession will take place, and we're talking about either trough to trough or peak to peak. And given what we're hearing about the current conditions, I'm apt to believe this may take longer for us to get out of the economic doldrums that we are in at the moment. So with that, if you have any questions, Your Honor, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you very much. And Madam City Clerk, it doesn't appear we have questions from members of the public on this item?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay, very well. And I don't have any requests from council members to speak. Are there any council members that would like to speak on this item? Okay. Mr. Molina, I just, it's less of a question, but it's more of a statement. When members of the public, you know, you do a good job giving these reports on a quarterly basis, but when members of the public see that there's basically about a quarter-billion dollars of investments at the city, and then the city talks about having, you know, financial constraints and that kind of thing, it's important to note that all but maybe sixteen million dollars... constraints and that kind of thing, it's important to note that all but maybe $16 million of that $255 that you were talking about is restricted, and I'm just wondering if you could comment quickly on that.
Mr. Mayor, that's a good question. I wish Kevin Rieper were here, because as the CFO, he'll have the pulse of the amount of cash that is available and the amount of cash that's restricted. You will recall, a couple of presentations ago, we showed this funnel, and we showed all these different funds from A through Z going into the funnel. That's Kevin's job, to make sure that he books properly all the funds and the cash in the funds from A to Z. My job is to take the cash that comes out at the bottom of that funnel and to invest it. And quite frankly, unless there's a federal law or a state law that prohibits me from investing, such as with CDC money, I will invest everything I can, as high as I can, and my concern is simply that yield. So perhaps at the next council meeting, you may want to have Kevin identify for you how much of that money would be restricted and how much of it would be available.
Thank you very much. And I think it's important to point out, and I know he does do that, he talks about in budget presentations, that the vast majority of money that, again, is either an investment or whatever, is restricted. And, you know, in our general fund reserve, unrestricted reserve, you know, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $16 million, of which we're going to be borrowing 10.5, not borrowing, we're going to take 10.5 million to deal with our current fiscal year deficit, the COVID-19-related deficit, and also some, about $2 million in other accumulated bills. But I think it's very important that we, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, that we make sure we tell members of the public truthfully that, again, Mr. Molina's job is to invest this money, but when people say $255 million, the city's saying that it has financial challenges, they've got $255 million in the bank, why can't they use that? And again, it's all but $16 million of that money is restricted. So those funds cannot be used for general fund purposes. So I just, thank you, Mr. Molina. Thank you for your presentation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that ends the appointment items, and now we'll go to the regularly scheduled city council meeting. And what I'd like to say very quickly is, this evening is that...
Actually, Mayor, we need to switch over to the 6 o'clock appointment, please.
Oh, that's right. Okay, we need to switch. I'm sorry. Thank you. We'll be right back, members of the public.
We're ready when you are, and if you could just call for another roll call when we resume, please. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So for those that are just tuning in right now, the Oxford City Council has had both a closed session and a three appointment items. We just concluded both the closed session and the three appointment items, and now we're beginning the regularly scheduled meeting that should have started at 6 o'clock. We're running a little bit behind, and we'll have the city clerk take the role, please. Madam City Clerk.
Councilwoman Basua.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilman McDonald.
Here.
Councilmember Madrigal.
Here.
Councilmember Perlo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Flynn.
Present.
Commissioner Andrade. I think he's attempting to log in. And Commissioner Vega. I'm not sure if he's able to join us tonight or not. And then the agenda for this meeting was posted in the City Hall kiosk on Thursday, May 7, with an amendment posted on Thursday, May 14. And pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 52.3, each of the Housing Board of Commissioners will receive $50 pay for convening this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before we begin our meeting this evening, I will actually just say that in honor of Councilman McDonald's request, that we take the public hearing, which, Madam City Clerk, just to make sure that the public hearing is anytime after 6:00 PM. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so after public comment on items not on the agenda, we'll schedule the public hearing M1 first in, to honor Councilman McDonald's request. And that reminds us that the tradition here at the Oxford City Council is that when we all rise for a pledge to the nation, that we also follow with a moment of silence. And I'd ask that this evening, that we have Councilman McDonald's brother and family in our prayers, because he recently passed away. So we offer our condolences to Councilman McDonald this evening and to his family members. All rise, please. Councilman Perlo, can you lead us in a pledge, please?
Yes. Please place your hand on your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated, please. So what we have here, ladies and gentlemen, this evening, is we have one ceremonial item, and I will first start off by naming that ceremonial item, and then I'll be calling Rosemarie Gaglione, the Public Works Director, who's going to be able to introduce this topic with a short introduction video. And the subject is the presentation of a proclamation designating the week of May 17 through the 23, 2020, as Public Works Week. And we'll now have the Public Works Director, Rosemarie Gaglione here, introduce this topic, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Thank you very much. I'm Rosemarie Gaglione, Public Works Director. I'm very proud to be able to lead a department of almost 500 amazing employees. I'd like to just focus a bit on our utilities just during this pandemic, because most people don't think about public works when they think about the current pandemic. And while all of our employees do very important work, I just want to highlight some of our employees who can't go home to avoid potential exposure. They have to stay and do their job. Environmental Resources has continued to collect trash, garbage, and recyclables. They still clean up homeless encampments, and even without a pandemic, you never know what you might find in there. If they stopped working, our streets, sidewalks, and alleys would become health hazards. People shed the virus through their waste products, and that just happens to be what our wastewater staff deals with every single day. If they weren't on the job, we would have raw sewage flowing out to the ocean, and that would be about 32 million gallons a day. That's assuming sewers and lift stations are working properly. Otherwise, we would have that running down streets. And our Water Division staff has remained on the job to make sure that everyone has clean, safe drinking water, so they can drink that, they can bathe in it, do dishes, laundry. Access to clean, safe drinking water is the foundation of public health. And had the virus grown out of control, we would have had to bring in RVs into our plants and sequester our employees from the rest of the world to keep them safe, so that they could continue to deliver these services. So I sort of see our utilities folks as unsung heroes in the city, and they have been working and continuing to work, and will continue to work to keep our city safe. And with that, I want to thank you for this, and we also have a short video to show you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gaglione. Thank you, and thank you to the employees. Thank you very much, Ms. Gaglione. Do you have any other words to say? Or any other words?
No, I do not, just accept to say thank you to all of our staff and employees for the work that they do, and thank you for acknowledging them today.
Thank you so much. And I do have a proclamation, and this proclamation is entitled, Public Works Week, May 17 through the 23, 2020. Whereas infrastructure improvements, facility maintenance, and other day-to-day services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, including engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of the Public Works Department. They are responsible for and must design, build, operate, and maintain roads, water supply, sewage, solid waste, and resource recovery systems, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our residents and business community. Whereas especially during this difficult time, as we face the coronavirus pandemic, it is important that we recognize the tireless efforts of the public works employees. And whereas this year, the theme of Public Works Week is the rhythm of public works to highlight all-encompassing impacts of public works in our daily activities. Madam Public Works Director, can I ask you, if it's rhythm of public works, does that mean you're going to dance also?
No, I was told that we didn't have time tonight.
Oh, okay, that's good. We'll revisit that again, then, Mr. City Manager. And now, therefore, I, Tim Flynn, Mayor of the City of Oxnard, do hereby proclaim May 17 through the 23, Public Works Week in the City of Oxnard, and invite all residents to join in in this well-deserved recognition to our Public Works Department, as we give them a place of honor and respect in our city. And so I'm very proud, this evening, of our public works staff and also our Public Works Director. As Mayor, we want to say, especially during these challenging times, I know the Environmental Resources Division and many other divisions throughout the city have really had a lot of challenges, and we, there's well-deserved acknowledgement of those accomplishments here this evening. So for all of those public works staff members that are listening, thank you, and thank you for your dedication and service to the City of Oxnard, and thank you, Ms. Gaglione.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that ends the ceremonial item, and now we'll go to public comments on items not on the agenda. At this time, the legislative body will consider public comments for a maximum of 30 minutes. A person may address a legislative body only on matters not appearing on the agenda and within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Speaker requests shall be submitted and set forth on the first page of this agenda. And typically, speakers will have, then, or speakers will have 2 minutes, and shorter times may be established as deemed necessary. The legislative body cannot enter to a detailed discussion or take any action on any items presented during public comments at this time. Such items may only be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda for discussion. Persons wishing to speak on public hearing items should do so at the time of the public hearing. And we do have one public hearing this evening, and so it makes that comment especially relevant. So let's go ahead with the speakers, and we'll start with the very first speaker is, I'm sorry, it's 3 minutes, not 2. Manuel Herrera, to be followed by Lawrence Stein, please.
Hello again.
Hello. You've got 3 minutes for items not on the agenda. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Flynn, Mayor Protem Ramirez, members of the city council, city manager and staff. My name is Manuel Herrera, Manuel Herrera. I'm the founder of Citizens for a Better Oxnard. I would like to read to you from an article that appeared in today's Ventura County Star titled, Ventura OK's Proposal to Let Stores, Restaurants Expand Into Street for Social Distancing. It reads as follows. The Ventura City Council approved a package of measures Monday designed to help businesses recover from the coronavirus pandemic, including closing part of Main Street to allow restaurants and stores to expand into the street, and streamlining the process for approving development permits. Both were part of an emergency economic development policy approved by a 7 to 0 vote and takes effect immediately once the state approves the next stage of reopening. Ventura Mayor Laverne stated, "We're taking innovative, creative, and flexible steps to show our business community that we'll do everything within our power to support this recovery." The reason I bring this up, and I say this with all due respect, is because what the City of Ventura just did is what we, the citizens of Oxnard, want our city to do. So yes, I'm jealous of Ventura right now. As the biggest city in Ventura County, we want Oxnard to be the leader. We want Oxnard to come up with these great and innovative ideas. Now, maybe I'm jumping the gun, and maybe you guys are working on creative ways of helping our local businesses during this pandemic, but if you are, well, I haven't heard of any. Sometimes our citizens don't know that you are working on something, then they think that you're not working on anything. So please, as city officials, let's step outside the box, like what Ventura did, with creative and innovative ways that our city officials can help our citizens and local businesses. Let's keep our citizens constantly updated, and let's try to be the city that leads instead of the city that follows. Please, do everything you can to help our local businesses during these hard times, and if you are working on something, let us know. Keep us posted. Thank you very much for your time, and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. And without making too many comments about the speaker, Mr. City Manager, I know you'll be giving a presentation and update on COVID-19. The Economic Development Committee is also going to hear a presentation on business efforts that have been undertaken, and I would also like to say, and I know Mr. Herrera has watched those broadcasts, that every Friday on Facebook Live, I've been able to give a presentation, and in most of those, the majority of the 8 broadcasts that I've had, 8 weeks in a row, I've addressed many of those undertakings that we're providing for Oxnard businesses. So hopefully, Mr. City Manager will be able to expand upon that during your comments.
I will, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, I hope Mr. Herrera is still listening. We did do that last week, but I'll explain why we didn't announce it yet when we get to that update later.
Okay, very good. And the very next speaker, let me just think, is Lawrence Paul Stein, to be followed by Larry Barberine, please.
Hi, Larry. It's Michelle from the council meeting.
I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead. 3 minutes.
My name is Larry Stein. I'm somewhat concerned with the lack of transparency of our city government. We're going to be hearing an item tonight on the agenda pertaining to developer fees. What's not on the agenda, which I can talk about, is the fact that we not having any developer fees or impact fees from the GREAT program. In 2009, the GREAT program was presented to the city council, approved by city council, and be the backbone, the backbone of the city water system. Developer fees have not been implemented for the water program. This could be part of the water master plan. There's no discussion by staff on the park master plan, I'm sorry, on the park, on the water master plan. And asking information on developer fee reports, the waiting, wait, this wait, this wait, when it comes up on the agenda to be able to speak on the water master program, on the water developer fees. There are no water developer fees in the upcoming hearings. Again, the real issue is the fact that they talk about such issues, but does not respond to the actual activities of these plans. Take very much free time.
All right. Madam City Clerk, it's unfortunate that he was speaking on an item that's scheduled for the public hearing, so it's, there are obviously limitations to doing this online. so there are obviously limitations to doing this online. So we go to the very next speaker, which is Larry Barberine, please.
Hello.
Hi, Larry. It's Michelle from the council meeting. And you've got three minutes to speak on items not on the agenda. Please go ahead.
Thank you so much. First of all, I want to say thanks to, and we're praying for all those families and friends who have lost relatives and friends in our wars, especially as we think this year is 75 years of the end of World War II. We appreciate all you've done, and I hope we all remember that going into Memorial Day on Monday. So thank you, all those families and friends, and for all those who served, of course. Last time I called, there was a lot of crackle on the phone, snap, crackle, pop. I don't know how much of what I said was heard, so if you indulge me, I'm going to repeat what I said then. For my topic, it wasn't on this end, something happened there. Senator, State Senator John Morlock, I think he's the only CPA, the only accountant in the state legislature. He has looked at the latest audited financials for cities, counties, school districts, et cetera, around the state. And the latest one is June 2018. And he found, and then the chief way of looking at the financial health of all our cities and such is the unfunded liabilities we have with pensions and medical retiree benefits. And he found that each Californian, each one of us, man, woman, child, we each owe, when you combine all the school districts, cities, counties, et cetera, Cal State, UC, we owe, each one of us owes $10,425 towards all those unfunded liabilities. And when you add that to $10,000 plus each American owes for the federal debt, they might be higher now, it's really going to be a big load, particularly on our grandkids and great-grandkids. In Oxnard, with the unfunded liabilities with pensions and such, we owe, each one of us in Oxnard, man, woman, child, owes $1,134. We rank among 482 California cities, we rank 391st. So it would be like if you had a... Let's say we were in a league, and you had five teams in the league. We'd be fourth place out of five teams among California cities. Not too good. So I am urging for us to have pension reform with new employees paying more into their own pensions and the medical retiree benefits instead of the taxpayers. And we can't be looking for non-COVID money to come from the feds and the state and all that. I think if we're going to get a ballot for that, it's got to be for all the COVID-related things. On things like this, we really have to get our health going, maybe with some help from our federal tax, federal tax dollars and state tax dollars. But we need so, 1,100, 1,100 plus in Oxnard, $10,425 per Californian. So just urging for us to act on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last speaker is Lang Martinez, please.
Hi, Lang. It's Michelle from the City Council meeting. Hello?
Yeah, hello.
Hi. You've got three minutes to speak on items not on the agenda. Please go ahead.
Yeah, hi. My name's Lang Martinez. I'm sure you know who I am, council, members of council. As you know, I spoke on a show last night, and certain leaks were taken out of it to different media groups in LA. As you know, you're aware that the fact is the homeless situation in Oxnard is different than your other cities, I mean, your other counties like Ventura, Ohio, et cetera. You know, the homeless haven't had showers since March 27th, and they haven't had any bathrooms, no hygiene. They're not even able to find any locations to plug into their phones. I'm going to take you back a little way, so we're going to take a ride. We're going to go back to an article that was written by the VC Reporter. It was called "The Red Zone". That attorney has contacted me, along with another attorney named David Lawson. And these attorneys will be in contact with me tomorrow, coming here. In regard to community action closing down, and the fact that what's going on in your city is inhumane, and it is in violation of their rights through the census counts, they have been counted, they are residents of Oxnard. Right, somebody is going to have to be, somebody is accountable for this. What's being done right now is not right. And you know, you guys can do your politics, your bureaucracy, but I'm going to, but these people are going to come in and be involved as far as what's ethical, what's right, what's humane. What I'm told now is it's going to fall, it's going to fall on community action. I'm sure that you guys, that they, you guys were, they were in contact with you in January. I've been given that information. But I do know that you guys have been trying to find a location since then, and you haven't done so yet. A lot of things fell through, haven't happened. We've had the pandemic. But the fact is, is that the community action and what's going on right now for homeless, it is essential to take a shower, it is essential as far as sanitation centers. It's essential that they have food, it's essential that they have the mail. And these things ain't happening in Oxnard. And I was blessed to be able on that show last night, so I'm glad finally that the outside is looking in. And I'm sure that you guys do remember the Red Zone and that law firm. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes the speakers' correct, Madam City Clerk, on items not on the agenda?
That's correct.
Very well. And now what we're going to do, as was earlier announced, is we're going to go ahead a little bit, and we're going to go to the first and only public hearing this evening. And just for members of the public that might be following along, the public hearing is on page four of the agenda. And I'll read this now. Number one, Community Development Department. Subject: Revision of Existing Fees and Adoption of New Fees Related to Development-Impact Fees and Affordable Housing in Lua Fee and Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Amendments. Recommendations are that the City Council, number one, receive a presentation and public comments regarding proposed new fees and revision to existing development impact fees. Two, Review and Provide Comments on the New Development-Impact Fee Nexus Study and Development-Impact Fee pertaining to a resolution for a growth requirement capital fee, park and recreation fee, traffic circulation fee, storm drainage fee, utility undergrounding in Lua fee, public art program fee, and mobility fee, including an automatic annual inflation factor and amenities in additions to Chapter 15 of the Oxnard City Code. Number three, Receive a presentation and public comments on the Affordable Housing in Lua Fee Nexus Study. Review the proposed in Lua fee. Recommended modifications to the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, ordinance number 2721, and provide direction regarding timing for the updating of the city's inclusionary housing ordinance. Number four, Adopt the Reference Development-Impact Fee Nexus Studies. Number five, Adopt the Development-Impact Fee in Affordable Housing Resolutions entitled, quote, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Oxnard adopting the Development-Impact Fee Nexus Study and Development-Impact Fees for the Growth Requirement Capital Fee, Park and Recreation Fee, Traffic Fee, and Utility Undergrounding in Lua Fee", and quote, or end quote, and quote, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Oxnard adopting the Affordable Housing in Lua Fee Nexus Study and Affordable Housing in Lua Fees", end quote. Six, Introduce for the first reading by title only and waive further reading of an ordinance entitled, quote, "Ordinance of the City of Oxnard Amending Article 6, Chapter 15, Division 1, Sections 15-165, 15-166, 15-167, 15-170, 15-171, 15-173, 15-174, 15-178, and adding Sections 15-183 and 15-184, amending Division 2, Section 15 through 186 and 15 through 188, amending Division 5, Sections 15 through 216, 15 through 218, 15 through 219, and adding Section 15 through 220. Amending Division 6, Sections 15 through 225 and 15 through 229, adding Division 8, Sections 15-242, 15-243, and 15-244, and adding Division 9, Sections 15-245, 15-246, 15-247, and 15-248, and making fundings pursuant to SEQA", end quote. And number seven, Introduce for the first reading by title only and waive further reading of an uncodified ordinance entitled, quote, "Ordinance of the City of Oxnard, California concerning affordable housing requirements for new developments in lieu of affordable housing payment", end quote. This was reviewed by the Public Works and Transportation and Housing and Economic Development Committees on April 28, 2020. And before we have Mr. Lambert give a presentation, and we will ask the city clerk to provide for affidavit of publications and written communications, if any. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a legal notice for this public hearing published in Vida newspaper on April 30th and May 7th of this year. And the city clerk's office has received about eight letters on this item. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you very much. Mr. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff Lambert, Community Development Director. I will sort of act as a little bit of an emcee for this agenda item. We have two consultants participating remotely, which I'll introduce in a moment, who will do the bulk of the presentation. But I wanted to start by making a couple of opening comments. One, that this has definitely been a group effort to bring this to the City Council tonight. Department staff from Community Development, Public Works, City Attorney's Office, and the City Manager's Office have been hard at work to bring this to you tonight. And we've been led by Chief Darwin Base, who's been our leader and executive sponsor on this important item. As the council probably knows, we've been at this for a couple of years, and this really culminates in a lot of work behind the scenes and with public engagement to bring this to the City Council tonight. It also is clear that it's been said and must be said that this is a strange time to be talking about impacting the cost of development in any community in probably the world, given the economic crisis that we're all going through. But I hope we are able to explain tonight why it's still important and critical that the City Council consider these fee adjustments tonight so we can bring our fees into alignment with where they should be. I will also note, as the clerk did, that you did receive several letters, some that were received by the committees earlier, and some that came in since this item was posted for tonight's meeting. And we'll do our best, as part of the presentation, to try to address some of the issues raised in those comments, as well as the comments made by the committee members when this was presented to the two committees back on April 28. So first, I want to walk through what will, undoubtedly will be a long presentation for the City Council, and we'll apologize upfront for the length, but there is a lot to cover. And we want to make sure we're thorough in getting that information in front of the council and the public. So this is really sort of two presentations in one. So we're going to start with the development impact fees. I'll introduce Allison Buly in a minute, who will do that presentation. And we'll provide an overview. We'll also summarize the comments made by the committee members and how we've responded. Talk about the methodology and the summary of those fees. We'll compare those fees to our surrounding jurisdictions, because we know that's important, and then come to the conclusions and next steps. And then we'll shift gears slightly and have another member of the team from Harris Consultants talk about our affordable housing in lieu fees. And again, we'll do some background, provide some inclusionary ordinance summaries, talk about the methodology and calculations that were involved in creating this fee, and describe the findings and the fees themselves, and also cover the feedback we got from the committee members when this was presented a couple of weeks ago, and talk about next steps. So we wanted to talk a little bit about what these fees are. They are provided for under Assembly Bill 1600, the Mitigation Fee Act. They are one-time fees on new development to mitigate their impacts on city facilities. New or expanded city buildings and equipment are included, new or expanded parks are included, and reduced traffic impacts are included by what the fees can pay for to make those improvements in our community. Without adequate fees, the city's facilities and infrastructure will become overwhelmed, and this will lead to further reductions in the level of service and quality of life in our community. I also think it's important to remind the council that it really is best practice to update these fees on a regular basis. We have not done that as well in this community, and that's why we're here before you tonight. As noted on the screen, we have some fees that have not been updated, like the park development fee since 1972. That's the oldest of the fees. But even 2007, 2005, and 1991 for traffic, growth, and storm drain are really out-of-date fees. They should be updated every five years and have regular cost of construction increases on an annual or semi-annual basis to make sure we keep up and don't have to make these significant changes all at once. But I will say that these fees are based on the cost of the facilities, vehicles, and equipment that serve development in our community. They're really based on factual evidence of the cost that development has on our ability to provide services. And it's important to remember that as we go forward. The amount of the fee is tied to the city's specific infrastructure and facility needs. It's hard to compare cities to cities, although we have provided that in the presentation. But just understand that our fees are really driven by our particular circumstances in the City of Oxnard. We also, though, looked at other considerations. And one is that we think development has... We want to make sure these fees don't have a long-lasting impact on our ability to attract quality development in the City of Oxnard. And believe me, as also having responsibility for economic development, that's important to me as well. And so the way we look at this is there are several ways to look at the inputs that developers have when they're trying to figure out what kinds of development they want to propose and in what location. And really, it comes down to cost of land, cost of materials, and cost of labor. And we believe that Oxnard's cost of land is less than our surrounding communities. What we have on the screen and what we provided in the report are, these are average industrial rents per square foot in the region. As the council knows, we engaged CBRE consultants. They're a real estate company worldwide to be our advisor on real estate matters. We asked them to pull up data on the going rates for industrial buildings rented in the region and with our competitive cities. And as you can see, it doesn't sound like a big number when you were talking about cents per square foot. But when you're talking about large projects, we are significantly below the cities. Even Moore Park, Ventura, Camarillo are all roughly 10 cents a square foot above us. So that's a reflection of the kinds of costs that we're talking about. We also looked at actual land acquisition and sales prices. This is a harder thing to compare, because it really depends on the individual properties that we're talking about. But just in general, Oxnard's average over several transactions was about 12 and a half cents, excuse me, 12 and a half dollars per square foot for the sale of industrial property. Thousand Oaks was over $20 a square foot. Simi Valley was a little above ours at 13 and 15 cents a square foot. And then Ventura was almost 20 cents, excuse me, almost $20 a square foot. So even with the sale of land, we are below the cost of other communities. So we believe that even though we might increase our fees, they're being increased for the right reasons, and comparatively, given our cost of land comparison, we might still see that kind of development come to our community. We also had council provided some feedback as part of this process. And this was feedback that really asked us to look at whether we should be more in line with adjacent cities. And here, the real response is that we need to be in line with the actual cost of infrastructure that are specific to the City of Oxnard. So comparison is hard. Although when we actually looked at the other cities in the region and the full cost of development, we are more in line when you look at every part of the development cost, not just the DIF fees that are before the City Council this evening. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Allison Buly from Harrison Associates, and she will do the rest of the presentation on the development impact fees. And then I'll come back and initiate the affordable housing fee in just a moment. Allison?
Great. Quick mic checks. Looks like it's working. Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Allison Buly, as Jeff mentioned. I'm a director with Harrison Associates, and I've been working on development impact fee programs for about the last 20 years. So I wanted to walk you through each of the fees that we looked at for the city. Many of them are existing fees that the city already had that were just out of date, as Jeff had mentioned. The first fee is the growth requirement capital fee. And this fee is made up of four components. The first component is the government facilities fee. So this funds facilities such as your city hall and your corporate... So this funds facilities such as your city hall and your corporation yard, buildings that are needed to house new employees and equipment that serve new development. So as the population grows, the city must expand the number of employees and the related facilities to accommodate that growth. The second item is the police facilities. This funds additional police vehicles, equipment, and building space. Again, as your population grows, the city needs to hire new officers to serve your expanding population, and this would house those officers. The third item is the fire facilities fee. This funds things such as new fire stations, training facilities, and fire engines that are necessary to serve new development. Without the collection of these fees, fire station construction would be outpaced by the level of new development, resulting in insufficient fire protection in your growth areas. This results in a drop in the level of fire protection services and lower response times within the city. So this has an impact on things such as your insurance ratings and your ability to respond to calls by your residents. The fourth component is the cultural and recreation facilities fee. This includes things such as your libraries, your community and senior centers. And again, as your population grows, if you don't increase these facilities, you can't provide the service to your residents that you've been providing in the past. So these fees are all based on your existing level of service, meaning that we're really trying to just maintain the city facilities at the level that you currently have. And this is a summary of the proposed and existing fees and a comparison of the increase. Next slide. The next fee is the park development fee. This covers park construction, so the city utilizes Quimby fees to obtain park land, but without a fee for the development of parks, you don't have a funding source to build things like sports facilities and restrooms and playground equipment. Your city's general plan standard is three acres a park per thousand residents. Your existing fee was adopted in 1972, so it was very outdated and is not adequate to fund the development of those park acreages. In fact, just doing a little math, it would take about 2,000 homes, which is adding more than 9,000 people to your city, just to build one acre of park. So this is the maximum fee that the city could collect to build three acres of park land for the city. You're currently working on an update to your master plan, so we would anticipate that that fee might be updated in the future. The next fee is storm drainage. This fee was adopted in 1991, and we're just proposing a construction cost index to be applied to the city's existing fee. Again, the city is working on a storm drainage master plan, and at that time would come back with some additional fees, but escalating these by E and R helps to ensure that we're keeping up with the increased cost of construction over the years, and these are the fees per gross acre. You can see they just about doubled. The next fee is the traffic circulation fee. So this is based on planned facilities that are needed to serve new development to improve your traffic circulation within the city. The city's been looking at a lot of intelligent transportation system, ITS improvements, and providing things such as adaptive traffic signals that help improve traffic flow throughout the city without having to widen your streets in a city that has, is fairly built out. As you know, if you try to widen your streets, that often requires condemnation and removing businesses to be able to do that. So by increasing and building your ITS system, you're able to mitigate a lot of those impacts. And as you know, you know, traffic has a huge impact on the quality of life of your residents and also the businesses. You know, if you can't get in and out of your commercial centers, a lot of people will not want to go to those. The city is expecting to update the traffic model next year, so we would expect, again, that the city might come back with some additional, with additional look at the fees at that time. The fees are based on the average daily trips that each land use takes. This is kind of a shortened version of the full fee schedule, because there's a lot of different land uses, but it's about a 42% increase per ADT, and then that's allocated to the different land uses based on the trips that each land use would take. And then the next fee is the mobility fee. So this is a new fee that the city is proposing. The city approved a bicycle and pedestrian facilities master plan in February of 2011, and that really showed all of the bicycle and pedestrian improvements that were needed to be constructed. So this fee is really being brought forward by staff due to the feedback they've received from residents, the one to be able to bike safely to the beach and to their parks. Because there are no general fund revenues, and grants are, you know, rather difficult to get for these types of improvements unless they meet specific criteria, such as your safe path to schools, staff felt it was important to put this fee into place, and to have it be a standalone fee to protect those dollars, to be able to do those pedestrian improvements and increase the safety of pedestrians in the city. Some cities include this in their traffic fee, but we are breaking it out separately. And the next fee is the public art fee. The city has a public art program in place that funds new art throughout the city. The art fee was established in 2006, and it was established as 1% of the value of the building. So we're keeping the existing methodology and just applying a construction cost inflation factor, which brings the fee up to 28 cents per building square footage, which is a 42% increase. Of projects that are within a specific plan area can still install their own improvements in accordance with their specific plan as well. And then the next fee, this is actually more of an in lieu fee, and it's really intended to help small developments that are less than 10 acres and smaller than 134,000 square feet. It gives them an option to pay an in lieu fee rather than being required to underground the utilities in front of their property. So this is one of those things that, it's an option, it's only applicable if, you know, they meet the requirements, if there's an underground requirement and they choose to pay this fee. We use the same methodology from 1989 that was used to establish the fee and just updated the current cost per linear foot to underground utilities, and that resulted in the new fee that you see here. Again, this is an optional fee for the developers, and it's really more of an incentive. So those are all of the fees. We're going to go through some of the comparisons now. As Jeff, you know, mentioned in the beginning, it is really difficult to get an apples-to-apples comparison with doing these fee comparisons. A lot of times, jurisdictions haven't updated their fees in a long time, which is the case with several of the other Ventura County cities, or, you know, sometimes they require things like developers have to, you know, do their own street construction, or, you know, do all the improvements that they identified through a traffic study, those types of things. So we're not always getting the full cost of development by just looking at these comparisons, but, you know, it helps guide you in your decisions, and so we want to put that together for you. This is for a single-family fee here. The green bar on the left shows the proposed Oxnard fees. The orange bar is the existing fees in Oxnard. We did include the water and sewer connection fees in here, even though we're not updating those, to give a little better comparison of the total fees in the city. And so that's there. The line going across the middle is the average. You can see we looked at Santa Clarita, Galita, Ventura, Thousand Oaks, and Camarillo. Ventura, you know, is one of those, they haven't updated their fees since the '70s for their parks and general capital facilities fee, other than just doing a construction cost index increase on them. Thousand Oaks only includes traffic, water, and sewer. They're fairly recent, but they don't have a park fee. And Camarillo is, again, also a traffic, water, sewer. They were a little older, adopted in 2012, and interestingly enough, the park district in Camarillo is actually looking at adding a park fee. They recently awarded a contract to do that, so we're starting that process. So you can see, you know, the proposed fees in Ventura are a little higher than the average, than the average fee, a little higher than your neighbors, but again, a lot of your neighbors are fairly outdated. I think the next slide. Similar comparison, just go through these kind of quickly. This is a multifamily dwelling unit. Again, you can see slightly above the average line. You can see Thousand Oaks kind of starts to rapidly approach that, the median price there. And then the next slide. These are two of the non-residential uses. This is retail on the left and office on the right. Again, you can see on commercial, Oxnard is actually a little below the average and a little higher on the office fee. And then the final slide is for light industrial, and I just want to mention that warehouse would have a lower fee, because warehouse has a lower traffic fee than other light industrial land uses. So those are all the fee comparisons. And this is just a little bit of a graphic, you know, talking about, okay, what are we talking about revenue-wise, looking at the fee program update? And we noticed, actually, that the mobility fee existing should have been zero, so this would have actually been closer to 73,000 collected at, under your existing fee program versus 150 collected under the proposed fee program. And really, the proposed fees are, you know, the maximum we could justify today. You know, there's always the option to consider something in the middle. There are just, you know, obviously some ramifications of what you can build, should that be a decision that you choose today. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Allison. So when the committee met, the Public Work Committee met on the 28th of April, one of the directions from the committee was to have staff develop an option for some ability to phase in the fees over time. So we did provide that in more detail in the staff report, but in general, we looked at where the fees were increasing by more than 100%, where the fees were out of sync with our neighboring cities. Those were sort of the criteria by which we looked at maybe some options. And so we did look at, the park development fee clearly has the largest increase. It was the oldest fee and the most out-of-date. So we looked at, one option for the council to consider is to implement that fee over three basic cycles. So implement a third of the increase immediately upon the effective date of tonight's action. Should the council take that? Implement the second third of the increase a year from now, roughly July of 2021, and the last portion of that increase in July of '22. We think that reflects the increase of that fee and may give that more time to sort of be phased in. We also looked at the growth fee, which also had a significant increase. Again, one of the older fees, and in this case, it wasn't as big an increase as parks, so we thought one option would be to implement 50% of the increase in the growth fee immediately, and the second 50% about a year from now in July of 2021. We did look at the other fees and possible other delays, but we really have not recommended any other phase in for the other fees, largely because we think on the other fees, the increase is not so substantial. Also, it's more in line with other cities, and we didn't make any further recommendations. And now I'd like to turn to the affordable housing portion of the presentation, and thanks the council for being patient. I'd like to introduce Hita Mosesman from Harrison, and she's going to make the second portion of the presentation on the affordable housing in lieu fee. Hita?
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Hita Mosesman. I'm a senior director with Harrison Associates in Community Economics and Housing Solutions, and I'm here to present the portion of the presentation that deals with the Affordable Housing in lieu fee nexus study that my firm had prepared for the city. Starting with a little bit of background on affordable housing, I'm sure as everyone here is aware, affordable housing is a very well-documented crisis in the state of California. I think it's written about on a daily basis. In order to address this crisis, many cities in the state have adopted what's called an inclusionary housing ordinance that requires a certain percentage of new market rate or new units that are developed as part of a market rate project to be set aside as affordable to various income levels that are moderate income and below. It is also common practice with many of these inclusionary housing ordinances to allow some flexibility and an in lieu fee, which is basically a fee to pay instead of providing the affordable units that are required through your inclusionary housing ordinance coined in lieu fee, or a developer can provide off-site units, meaning the affordable units on a different site or location. Many cities have opted to do this. It's allowable to provide options and flexibility to developers and to make sure that developers are not discouraged from building in perhaps another city. So you, the city of Oxnard, have an inclusionary housing ordinance, last updated in 2006, and this table summarizes the requirements of that existing ordinance. Generally, for all for-sale units, single-family and multifamily, 10% of those units need to be available to lower-income households, and I will get into what that means a little bit later in the presentation. With regard to multifamily rental, you also require 10% of the units be affordable, but you break that 10% into two sets of 5%, one for very low income and one for low income. So currently, the fees that your inclusionary ordinance allows, the in lieu fees, meaning instead of a developer providing the 10% of those units as affordable, a fee per unit that they develop can be paid, and those fees, as they stand now, are $7,000 for single-family unit, 5,500 for condominium multifamily for sale, and a little over $23,000 for a apartment So as I said, Harrison Associates was retained by the city to prepare an affordable housing in lieu nexus study, and really what that means is it's a study that looks at the relationship between the development of market rate units in the community and the need for affordable housing. A big component of this study was to look at your existing inclusionary housing requirements, those percentages we went over on the previous slide, the 10% affordable to different levels of very low, low income households. And we wanted to update the costs associated with building residential units. We also wanted to look at what the current affordability metrics are for very low, low and moderate income households, as the ordinance was adopted so many years ago in 2006. Part of the study, a very large part of the study, and which is a large focus, is what's called the affordability gap, and that is basically the difference between what it costs to build a unit of housing and what residents can afford to pay for that housing at different income levels. So the difference between the two is what we call the gap in affordability. This slide depicts generally the process that we followed in calculating what the updated fees would be pursuant to your inclusionary housing ordinance requirements. So first, we looked at the type of new market rate units that are being built in Oxnard currently in terms of for sale and also rental apartments. Then we examine what the costs are to build a unit of housing in Oxnard.
Excuse me, Mayor. The speaker is breaking up. I don't know if anybody else has a problem, but I'm...
I'm sorry. I can't. I'm sorry, Councilmember Prello, you could no longer hear the speaker. Is that what you just said?
Yes.
Can you hear this?
You sound like you're underwater right now. I don't know what's going on here. I don't know if anybody else has that problem?
No.
No, I'm here to speak or find...
Councilmember Prello, we can actually hear just fine in here. Maybe if you try logging out and logging back in again?
Okay.
Okay, very well.
If we can just allow him 30 seconds to do that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Just let me know when it's a good time to start.
We'll see when he gets back on. Thank you.
Okay.
So this one's for the back door, and this one is for the elevator. Our IT tech is heading over there right now to go check on him.
Okay. Why don't, can we do this? Can we just resume? Can we just resume the, the public hearing? Because it could take 10, 15. We don't know how long that's going to take when I'm the city clerk. So why don't we just go ahead? Ms. Mosesman, can we go ahead with your presentation, please?
Sure, sure. I just wanted to start the first box of this, just to make sure with the interruption, that we get the full flow of the methodology. So we start with looking at the type of new market rate units that are being built in Oxnard. Secondly, we look at the cost to build each of these types of units, single family, multifamily, apartment. And then we look at the household income of different levels of affordability, very low, low, and moderate income households. And what is the maximum that these households can afford to spend on housing every month? And then next, we calculate that affordability gap that I had mentioned. Excuse me. I'm tickled. The first gap that we look at is the sale gap. That is for sale housing, meaning the cost to build a unit of for sale housing, less the affordable sales price, meaning the sales price that a very low, low, or moderate income household could afford to pay. The next type of gap that we look at is for the rental housing. And again, that's the cost to build that housing. And that's less the maximum supportable debt that the developer would have to get in financing to be, and pay back on a loan to be able to build that project. So the resulting fee that we calculated is that affordability gap for sale and for rental. We did those separately. And we multiplied that gap times your existing inclusionary housing requirement, those percentages that I reviewed on the previous slide. So this table represents a summary of those affordability gaps that I had mentioned using the methodology that I just reviewed. So on the very left-hand column of the table, we have the various affordable affordability levels, very low income, low income, and moderate income. The AMI that you see stands for area median income. So very low income household are those households that make 50% or less of area median income. Low income is 50 to 80% of that. Moderate income is 80 to 120% of that, just to give you some context. So looking at for sale units, we calculated what the affordability gap would be in terms of the cost to build versus how much each of those different households could afford to pay for housing. And then we, we, the result are those numbers, anywhere from 238,000 for a moderate income, for a modern multifamily unit, to almost 450,000 of affordability gap for a single family home for a low income household. On the rental side, we also looked at that same affordability gap, cost to build versus the maximum allowable debt. It's anywhere between 128,000 to 334,000. And then we basically took the average of those numbers for each level of affordability. Just to note, on the very low income, the only reason that we didn't calculate the gap there for single family and multifamily is in the wake of the last financial crisis in 2009. Loan requirements were tightened to the point where it is very challenging at certainly income levels to get a loan. So this really had to do with feasibility more than anything else. So here is a table that summarizes the findings from the Nexus Study, as well as what the proposed fees are for the study. So we start out with the different land uses, again, single family, multifamily, for sale and for rent. We look at your existing inclusionary requirement. Again, that's from your ordinance from 2006. Next, we look at the affordability levels that I had mentioned earlier, very low, low income, because those are the only levels of affordability that your inclusionary housing ordinance references. We look at the affordability gap per unit, and that's the average from the previous table. And then we look at what that gap would be, the fee would be for that, for those units by applying affordability gap times your inclusionary housing requirement per different types of units. So for multifamily, it's $28,000. For single family, multifamily for sale, it would be anywhere between 36 and $45,000. Next, we looked, similar to what Allison had reviewed, what are the other in-lu fees that other cities are charging? So we looked at other cities in your region and in other parts of Southern California for a very large sample size. We looked at 12 other cities in total, and the average of those fees is anywhere between 23,000 and 36,000. So the proposed fees in the study that you have before you this evening are somewhat lower than the total fee per unit that was calculated by looking at the affordability gap times your existing inclusionary requirement, but is more in line with the average fee in other cities. I also wanted to highlight that the city is, is free to choose a fee that is less than what is shown in the study in terms of the Nexus, particularly for multifamily rent. These would represent maximums of what you could charge for the in-lu fee. On April 8th, there was a community meeting held with local housing advocates, developers, and other interested parties to review the study. We provided a presentation, walked through the methodology and the findings. And the purpose of the meeting was to, again, obtain that input from members of the community who were involved in housing. And this slide highlights a little bit of that input. The first person who provided input was Barbara Macri Ortiz. She, in particular, asked about the density assumptions that were used in the report, meaning how many units per acre when we were looking at a potential housing development. And we had explained that we had coordinated with city staff to come up with those assumptions. She asked if utilities and other expenses related to housing, like property taxes, were included in our analysis. We had answered that yes, in fact, we did do that with rental and for sale, included things even like homeowners association fees and maintenance, et cetera. And she had provided the input that she wanted to see some revisions to the existing housing ordinance and wanted the fees to be maximized. Next, there was Maury Ruano from People's Self-Help Housing Corporation, who had commented that, had actually recommended that the San Luis Obispo and the Galita programs be looked at in terms of their inclusionary housing program within Lufi's. And then Eduardo Espinoza from Rio Economic Development. He agreed with the above comments and commented that the fees seemed too low. On April 28th, we met with the Housing and Economic Development Committee. We provided a presentation similar to one that we provided tonight, and we obtained input from that committee. Some of the highlights of that input would be to look at considering the comparison of the proposed fees in those adjacent cities, noting that the in-lu fees in those cities are really not consistent across the region, and that the city's proposed fees, as shown in the study, are really specific to Oxnard and Oxnard's housing policies and the cost to build in Oxnard, and then those income levels that are prevalent in the area. It was asked, how does the concept of supply and demand impact the production of affordable housing? And it is true that the basics of economics tell us that if you have high, if you have high supply, and that meets demand, that prices will stabilize. However, when it comes to the severity of this housing crisis and the need for over a million units of housing in the SCAG region, and you combine that with very healthy local economies, it, the result is that you really can't build your way out of a crisis like this, and that as long as there is a demand for housing, people are going to choose to live in coastal areas where the economy is best. And those prices, regardless of supply, are going to be challenged. And then lastly, how much in-lu funding has been collected to date by the city, and how is that being used? The current balance in the in-lu fee account is 2.3 million, and city staff has successfully leveraged those funds to build new affordable housing units in the community. There are other sources of funding available that cities can seek. Largely, the low income housing tax credit program through the state has been very successful and really does provide a significant funding source to build rental housing, very affordable rental housing in the state.
Thank you, Hita. Back to Jeff Lambert here in the council chambers. So a couple other things, just in closure. One, the, the Public Works Committee also had a couple questions that we answered in the report. I just wanted to highlight those. One was, does the gas stations per pump fee also apply to electronics charging station? And the, the short answer is no. We don't see that trend quite resulting in inclusion in the fee yet, although as that expands, we might have to revisit that in the future. And the second question was more about how, how does the utility underground fee get utilized? And we, we did provide an answer in the report as well, that this is really an option for smaller developers, where it might be more cost effective for them to pay an in-lu fee as opposed to the property by property undergrounding, and then the city collects that fee, and then maybe can do a larger segment of undergrounding with multiple fees collected as opposed to doing it on a site by site, site by site basis. So that concludes the presentation. Thanks to council for your patience. I know this was a long one. If the council does approve this tonight, we come back, the ordinance will come back on June 2nd for the second reading. The fees will be effective 60 days after the final council action. And the city will update the inclusionary housing ordinance as part of the general plan housing element update in 2000, by the end of this year and through the end of next year. That concludes staff presentation. We're happy to answer questions. And I will note, there's about a dozen staff members from multiple departments in the council chambers to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lambert, for that presentation. And I just want to remind the audience that this is a public hearing. And again, the audience could be, in some cases, in the council chambers or at home. This is a public hearing. And if you desire to speak on this item, then you should have submitted your comments already to the city clerk. And so I'd like to open up the public testimony portion of this public hearing and begin with the speakers in the order in which their speaker cards were submitted. And the very first speaker card is Barbara Macri Ortiz. Please.
Hi, Barbara. You've got three minutes to speak on the public hearing, please.
Yes, hi. Barbara Macri Ortiz here, Mayor Flynn, Mayor Protem Ramirez, and council members. I wanted to say that with respect to this item, first and foremost, we were very disappointed that the city decided just to focus on the fees without focusing on the ordinance itself. We've been asking for this ordinance to be updated for quite a while. But in the course of our dialogue with the staff, I understand that the staff is now recommending that the council direct staff to update the inclusionary housing ordinance simultaneously with the update of the city's 2021, 2029 housing element, which then would be done next year, by the end of next year. It's really, really important because without a decent inclusionary housing ordinance, we're going to end up giving away all of our land to market rate, and we're not going to see much. I think, I hope you all got a chance to read the letter that I submitted to the Housing and Economic Development Committee. I don't think it was included in your packet initially, but I understand that it was supposed to have been provided. There's a lot of facts and statistics and figures in there that show how really bad shape we're in. And I'm hoping the council will really study this, because this is one of the bottom line issues with respect to a town, is how we house our people. With respect to the proposed in-lu fees, I would recommend that the council adopt the actual fee that was figured out, and that would be on Table 2. I think that's on page 221 of your packet, under the column Total Fee Per Unit. This argument about, well, we got to keep them low so we can be competitive with other cities, I think that's kind of a ridiculous argument in line where we're at now. We have built over 13,000 units in this city over the past 15 years. And we are in worse shape today with respect to our residents than we have ever been. We need to start building housing that will be affordable to our people. The best way to do that is to get some participation from the private market, and that's with your inclusionary. We need to raise it. You know, 50% of our people are below low income. We're for low income and below. And we've got an ordinance that's 10%. It, it just, that's why we have, we have more overcrowding today than we had when we had 40,000 units in this town. Now we've got like 54,000 units, and we're in worse shape. So we've got to start looking at the picture and starting to put the emphasis on building housing for the people who live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll go to the next speaker. The next speaker is Ann Walsh, please.
Thank you.
Hi, Ann. It's Michelle from the city council meeting, and you've got three minutes to speak on the public hearing item. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Ann Walsh. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Mayor Flynn, Mayor Protem Ramirez, and council members, this is Ann Walsh, Director of Development for Shea Properties, working on various projects located within River Park. I have submitted a letter for council review and consideration related to our position on the increase of development impact fees. We oppose the increase, not just due to the pandemic, that we are all, as a world, struggling to see beyond. We also oppose the fee increase specifically for our remaining projects located within the master planned community, River Park. As you know, River Park has been an active project for well over 15 years and has endured its fair share of economic challenges due to the Great Recession. That said, the River Park developers were successful in providing the needed infrastructure for this master planned community, streets, water, wastewater, sewage system, among other things, and more parks than required by either Quimby or park requirements. Additionally, the collection has provided well over $1 million in public art at its own choice, far greater than the public art requirement. As noted in the presentation, development impact fees are defined as one-time fees paid by new development to fund the cost of providing municipal facilities to serve that development, or rather, to ensure that the new development pays their fair share of their impact on the city's infrastructure. I would argue that the River Park developers have both provided for and paid for their fair share over the past 15 years. Any new project within River Park remains an anticipated project per the River Park's specific plan, and therefore should not be considered as a new project for the purpose of the demand to city infrastructure. Additionally, as noted in the letter submitted to you, River Park is burdened with several fee of fees, one of which pays for ongoing maintenance and services of police, fire, and parks, notably three of the components within the growth requirement fee as discussed in the Nexus Study. We are nearing the point where we can envision project completion in the foreseeable future. However, the proposed increase in fees would most certainly curtail future development, especially development of any multifamily housing.
30 seconds.
Council, in consideration of the fact that the River, that River Park is a master planned community... that River Park is a master planned community that has already provided the required infrastructure and remains burdened by a CFD to pay for ongoing maintenance and support of parks, fire, and police, I respectfully request that you direct staff to negotiate a fee lock for remaining projects located within the boundaries of the River Park's specific plan, including in lieu fees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And very, I just want to mention this is a public hearing. And especially if you're in the council chambers, you haven't submitted a speaker card yet. You could submit that to the city clerk, and you'll be called in the order in which your speaker card was submitted. The very next speaker is Jonathan Cornelius, please.
Hi, Jonathan. It's Michelle from the city council meeting.
Hello.
Hi. You've got three minutes to speak on the public hearing item. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is Jonathan Cornelius, and I just wanted to follow up what Ann Walsh just said from Shea Properties. We are also a developer in the River Park master plan and specific plan area. And I would echo Ann's comments that, you know, we would humbly ask the council to exclude projects that are already within a master plan that has provided for infrastructure, you know, in their existing developments. The impact alone on our project from this increase in fees would be excluding the in lieu fee would be 3.75 million. And even with the delayed pay in schedule, you know, proposed where a third of the, I believe it was the park fee, and half of the other fee would just, would be delayed, you know, that we would still be looking at a fee increase of 2.3 million. And unfortunately, given the current economic times, that would just kill our project. You know, we're in very uncertain economic times. You know, it's just a, you know, 36 and a half million people are on unemployment out of a workforce of 160 million. You know, those headwinds against are already hard enough for development. Raising costs, you know, on top of that, just kills projects. It's a hard situation. I understand developments need to pay their fair share. But such a dramatic increase in cost would just be a deal killer. And unfortunately, you know, developments need to cover their fair share. But at the same time, you know, if developments die, you know, unfortunately, the law of unintended consequences, then that revenue, you know, from the developments won't be coming into the city. So I would echo Ann's comments and just humbly ask that developments that are inside master plans or specific plans that have already provided for infrastructure be excluded from the cost increase. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just remind, this is a public hearing. And if you'd like to speak, please fill out a speaker card. And the very next speaker is Lawrence Paul Stein, to be followed by Nancy Lindholm, please.
Hi, Larry. We're back with the public hearing item this time.
My name is Larry Stein. The concept of affordable housing in Oxnard is ludicrous. A typical house in Oxnard might cost $400,000 or $500,000 for low income. Whereas somebody coming out of school or been married for three or four years can come up with $50,000 to $100,000 down payment for an affordable house. So when city council staff talks about affordable housing, it's laughable because there is no affordable housing in Oxnard. The second issue I wish to address is water. Water is not being discussed in this impact fee report. The GREAT Program was implemented in 2012. Great Pairs are paying thousands if not millions of dollars on debt service that we're not getting the benefits for due to developers not paying or contributing towards the GREAT Program. We just heard two speakers lament about the fact that these fees are unreasonable. But please bear in mind, the fees have been paid that have not been updated for 30-plus years or 15-plus years of paying on the fee involved. You talk about developers paying their fair share. What is their fair share? The cost of housing 30 years ago is $55 per square foot. The cost of housing now is $300 per square foot. Perhaps if you raise the fees by 600%, it won't be worth 30 years ago to maintain the cost of housing. Again, do you want to see fees increase 600%? That would be fair. We have water demands with new housing. Each new house is built, additional water has to be imported. Consumers now paying a fee above the tier rate for additional water because we're not contributing towards the GREAT Program. We're not doing the ASR well. The developers aren't contributing towards the ASR well. We are the passives importing zero water and using great water for at least 14,000 acre feet. The developers aren't paying for this. They're covered under the water trial path because the path was approved before these programs were. We're not paying impact fees for new water, but that would be the right thing to do. Again, consultants were called by myself several times, and phone calls were not returned. Emails were sent to consultants. They were not returned. The packet came out saying you have opportunity to speak on this issue. Well, I've asked questions, I'm not getting answers.
30 seconds.
That has not been totally responded to the questions I had. Again, thank you for your time and best consideration.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. And if you'd like to speak, please fill out a speaker card, hand it to the city clerk, and you'll be called in the order in which your speaker card was submitted. Very last speaker is Nancy Lindholm, please.
Hi, Nancy. It's Michelle from the council meeting.
I'll give you your phone number. I'll get back to you as soon as I can. Thanks.
Should we try her again, Mayor?
Okay, wait, why don't we try again?
Hi, Nancy.
This is Nancy, yes.
Yes, hi. It's Michelle from the city council meeting. We're on the public hearing item, so you have three minutes to speak. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Michelle. Hi, Nancy Lindholm, President and CEO of the Oxnard Chamber of Commerce. I was glad to see the letter of opposition that we submitted to the council committees in your package for tonight. Unfortunately, we don't believe that our concerns voiced in that letter have been addressed. Specifically, we're still kind of dumbfounded in using Santa Clarita and Goleta as in any average impact fees when we don't see a lot of similarity with those communities with Oxnard. Also, why does it cost so much more, in fact, twice, to permit a single-family dwelling in Oxnard versus Camarillo and Ventura? I understand that, I heard that Camarillo and Ventura have not updated their fees lately. However, twice or more seems really excessive. The table on slide 19, corrected for the mobility fee, actually shows that the impact fees will at least double. That seems rather ludicrous in this economy. And finally, if you move forward with the proposed fee increases, we ask that you consider phasing in the increases, not just the park fee, but all the fees. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Madam City Clerk, are there any additional speaker cards?
No, that's all we have.
Okay, I'd like for a motion to close the public testimony portion of this public hearing.
Moved. So moved.
Okay. Mayor Protem, then move that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the public testimony portion of this public hearing is now closed. Before we begin with council comments and questions, I'd like to call on the city manager, Mr. Newen. Mr. Newen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, I want to also thank the speakers, everyone who took the time to pre-arrange and then to also call in or to be called to speak. And on this item, I actually agree with most of them and most of what was stated. Unfortunately, while there's never a optimal time to bring fee increases to a city council, this is clearly a very bad time, and I acknowledge that. And in some ways, I agree with Ms. Lindholm. It seems and feels ludicrous, but I'm going to explain why we must do this. I understand that my predecessor, city manager Nyhoff, did inform the council when he was here that this was a necessary exercise to go through in large part because the city had, over the years, neglected to do it thoroughly. I mean, the fact that we have, is it the parks fee? One of our fees, the last time it was updated was 1972. That is in and of itself ludicrous. And there's really, there's really no possible explanation for that. So I just have to say that that is just neglectful. And that in part, along with other iterations of kicking the can down the road, has forced us into this situation. So not only is this a necessary fee update to bring us up to modern costs in modern times, it is also, in essence, another major cleanup item for this city and this organization. The city's fee structure, these development impact fees, are both fundamental to how cities operate and also elemental to our revenues and how we cover costs for all the necessary services that must be provided as the city develops and grows. So I think it's more than obvious, if you look through the report, that many of these fees have been, are woefully, not have been, but also are woefully outdated. And in some ways, you can see the evidence of the impact, not only in this difficult discussion and decision point that we're asking of you, but physically, one great example is Sports Park. Regardless of the pros and cons of that real estate deal, we have a large swath of land there that was purchased to be a park, and we haven't had the funding to properly develop it. And there are other examples around the city. So the other issue is with regard to the folks who are in midswing of their projects, River Park, Wagon Wheel, a few other development projects, I totally understand what they're saying. But keep this in mind, a couple of points. No matter when we bring a fee update to you, and the best practices in local government is to do this every five years, but no matter when the moment is, there will always be a batch of projects that are midswing, that are in the ground, made their commitments, made their investments, and they're in the process. So it's also a good practice. And I would certainly look forward to renegotiating to update their development agreements so that they are not harmed by this. It makes perfect sense. Whether the economy is good or bad, they've made their financial decisions based on the projects that we negotiated and approved. So regardless of the state of the economy, it would be the right thing to do. And I certainly hope that I'll have an opportunity to do that. But there's another aspect with regard to those developments that I need to also make clear in defense of the city side of this, which is those development agreements were negotiated. And inherent in the risk of the large investments they were making, they took on the risk that the fees would be increased at some point. And in fact, we, at one point in negotiations, made it clear to the city in the past that we would not lock in fees because the city knew that we would have to increase the fees. So that was negotiated. That is one of the inherent risks in the projects. So I just want to be fair about this. While we will, we should, and we're very open to renegotiating, these terms were negotiated. And one of the terms were either fee locks expire at a certain date or that they would not be frozen permanently, which is sensible. So I want to point that out. Now, another aspect about our fees here in Oxnard having been outdated for so long is the reality that investors and developers have enjoyed very low fees when making their investments here in Oxnard as opposed to other communities. But again, we have no interest in harming these projects that are well underway, in the ground, transforming, have transformed, and continue to transform this community. We want them to succeed. We need them to succeed. So of course, we should be renegotiating their development agreements so that they can continue and complete their projects. But again, we, at the same time, we cannot let these same projects and the fear of future developers, whether they want to come or not, we can't let that hold our fee structure hostage. We cannot afford to kick this can down the road any further because no matter when, if we were to do that, no matter when we bring it back, as I said before, there will always be a group of developments and developers who are midstream, and they will have the same complaints. So again, it's never a perfect time. I understand that this is a difficult time. But we have to fix this problem with the city's fee structure. It is woefully outdated. We are underpricing ourselves with regard to other communities, especially coastal communities in Southern California. And it is elemental to the revenue side of our budget. And if we don't do this, when the housing gets built as mandated by the state, and I remind you, our RENA number for the next round is 8,529 new homes. If we don't update our fees, we won't be collecting adequate fees to build these services and the infrastructure necessary to service the 8,529 new homes that the state has mandated us to build. And hence, we will have to pick it up, those services up, from the general fund. Or we will not pick them up, and the city will be in much worse condition. So I implore you to do your best as you deliberate with each other to make sure that we can go forward from here. And we have many people here who are prepared to answer whatever questions you may have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And so now, we're going to go around. And, you know, I'd like actually to start with the chairs of the two committees that heard this issue. And I'll start with Chair Madhigala, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Quick little recap, even though I think Harrison Associates did a wonderful job in recapping the main points of the Housing and Economic Development Committee meeting. You know, we did talk about housing. You know, I know Mayor got really into the supply and demand and would we ever even have enough supply to meet the humongous demand of living in a coastal city here in California. But anyways, I did mention a few issues I had with the huge increase. But at the same time, I know as being on council for a few years, when the in lieu fees come around, especially for in lieu of affordable housing, how council does not look positively because the price is so low. Remember, a developer came not too long ago. Remember, a developer came not too long ago, back when we were still in council chambers over their development, and I believe everyone on council was dumbfounded that the price for the in-lug fee of affordable housing was ridiculously low. You know, I have a little bit of, you know, I'm a little hesitant seeing that, yes, I know that fee needs to increase, just the large amount of an increase that we're looking at. I understand it's necessary. You know, it's a difficult time, one way or the other, it's going to be difficult times for everyone around, I think, as a city, as individuals, as families, as a business owner. We are in for some tough times, so you know, this is an issue that we have to look at all pros and cons looking forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now the Public Works Chair, Councilman, Chair Perrello, please. Councilman Perrello.
I want to thank the fellow committee members that serve on the Public Works, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Flynn. I want to also thank Alison Boulier. She made a good presentation tonight. She made a tremendous presentation at the Public Works Committee meeting. High quality. This is the first time that I've heard the Ms. Mosman. She was very good also, but mainly, the Public Works is what I'm going to address. And some of the comments that have been made by the public. I appreciate everybody's comments. I appreciate whichever way this is going to go, this is the decision that the council is going to make for the residents of this city and anybody doing business in the city moving forward. The purpose of addressing this is to address something that has been put off for far too long. I can take the worst-case date, 1972, and you know, they're going to go, oh, well, you're grabbing the worst-case, Perrello. Well, there's some other dates. And storm drain fees, 1991. Ground growth capital fees, 2005. Traffic impact fees, 2007. I got on the council in 2013. I recall coming to this council since 1998, public sitting in the public, and nobody wanted to raise the fees. Sure, it's going to cost more, but I will use the same point and try to make the same impression that I tried to make at the Public Works Committee meeting. Every council member on this council has at one time or other been in every part of this city. If we cannot see with our own senses, mostly our eyes, potentially our ears, as we hear drive over potholes, that there are differences in the way the city has been taken care of. And when it comes to our attention that fees have not been raised over a period of time, it drives this particular councilman, Bert Perrello, very hard when I've had people tell me over the years, starting in the South Winds neighborhood, how come where you live in the South Bank neighborhood, it's nice, and where I live in the South Bank neighborhood, it's not? I didn't have answers as a member of the public. I don't have total answers now, but I know that this is a component of those answers. Because I will tell you, fellow council members, I've met grandparents in East Village, in South Winds, in Bartola Square, that have complained that they bought the homes when they were new, and they still don't have the amenities for their grandchildren. They bought the homes when they were newlyweds, no kids, or maybe just a couple of babies. And now they're saying they don't have the amenities that were pledged to them at that time, up to the time that they now have their grandchildren. And in some cases, those grandchildren are off to college. We cannot keep kicking the can down the road. There is never a good time for fee increases. There's never a good time for people to be out of work. This is a very unique situation, but I contend, I firmly believe, if we were not in the virus situation that we are now, the health issue, the same arguments would be used, you can't raise the rates, it's going to be too much. Well, 10 years from now, or next year, when someone else sits in my seat, they're going to be facing the same decision I am tonight. What do you do and what do you tell those people that they didn't get what they were supposed to get? When it comes to a comment that the city manager made, I believe in the free enterprise system. I believe in making money. Ain't nothing wrong with making money if you're doing it legally. But when there's a contract in place, and I only refer to this because today I served on an executive committee meeting for the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, where fees were discussed. When there's a contract in place, and the contract says the fees can be addressed, and someone is saying, well, no, we can't. It's like, did anyone have a gun to somebody's head to sign those agreements? It may not be the talkers, the speakers at present, but there were people in the past that signed those agreements, including people in the past that signed for the city. Are we going to honor those agreements? Are we going to accommodate the residents of Oxnard? All the residents of Oxnard. That's what this is about. We've had people complain that the fees for unneutered dogs have gone up tremendously, and yet we don't get a lot of, you know, we don't get a lot of people really worried about that. But on these issues, it brings up developers, it brings up organized labor, it brings up community activists, it brings up housing activists. This city of Oxnard needs to move forward. It cannot move forward and continually make promises and write checks that we can't cash, because we are doing it on the backs and the necks of people that have been here for a long time. I'm an old man now. I'm not going to be here very long, but we're writing those checks on people that are just getting out of school. I mentioned something the other day about 1972. To my surprise, one of the city's staff mentioned they weren't even born yet. Gives me a real cold blast of water. I mean, like, I'm old. But the reality is, I'm supposed to do the best for the residents of Oxnard. And the residents of Oxnard have been subsidizing residents that come in, whether it's affordable housing or market-rate housing, when the appropriate fees are not put in place, collected, and enforced. If I want to buy a hamburger, I got to pay the price of the hamburger. It may have cost a lot less sometime in the past, but my options are to do without, to pay the price, or to steal it. And if I steal it, I'm rolling the dice. Do I get caught? We cannot steal from the future of the people in this city. The fees need to be put in place. I have yet to see anybody bring any information that these consultants have done us a disservice by showing us what reality is. When the complaints are made about the city of Galita and the city of, and I beg your pardon, Mayor, the Ms. Lindholm, this, the one in Santa, the other city that you complained about, what do we look at? Oxnard, when they're talking about the price of land, Oxnard is an undiscovered gem on the coast, where if this was anywhere else, I couldn't afford to live here. I don't know that very many people that have a home here could afford to live here. People have mentioned, Mr. Stein was very eloquent, when we talk about affordable housing, we have a issue, we have a need, but we also have people that have done everything they can to scrape together the down payment, pay the mortgage over a period of time, watch their kids grow. Because of situations, maybe the kids come back home, and they have grandkids with them. And the promises and the conditions, and basically, I look at it, the guarantees and the contract we've made with the residents of this city has not been fulfilled, because we have continually put off biting the bullet. You cannot continually put off biting the bullet. You have to risk whether you're going to be sitting as a council member and doing the best for the community, or you're going to be hoping that nobody calls you on the carpet and it doesn't blow up in your face. I, those are my concerns, and I do respect every other council member, but there was a, not a violent disagreement, but there was a very heated disagreement on this committee, on this matter. There was not a consensus. We agreed to move it forward with some questions and some, and they've been addressed. But Mayor, those are, that's the comments from the chairman of the Public Works Committee meeting.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to Councilman McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'll be upfront, I had a little bit of heartburn when this came to Public Works and Transportation Committee. And to Mr. Lambert and your team and all the folks that have worked tonight to put this together, I applaud you. You've dealt with a very difficult situation, and you were given something that's kind of ended up in your laps. And I'll also be the first one to say that, for the years I've been in office, I have periodically said, we need to update our fees. We need to update our fees. And now we're doing it. But it's a perfect storm for the absolute worst time to update fees because of this pandemic. You know, a lot of us are not working because of the safer-at-home or, you know, ruling that we should not be at work. A lot of businesses are closed. I've seen estimates as high as potentially 40% of currently closed businesses won't be able to reopen. You've already seen some chains go out of business. I think Maria's Italian Kitchen in the collection has shuttered completely. Soup Plantation has shuttered all their stores completely. Those are their decisions to do it. And I don't have a problem with raising fees, but I do have a problem with doing it overnight. And I'll use the example of, we haven't updated the parks fee since 1972. That number is very clear to me, because that's the year I graduated high school. That was 48 years ago. Seems like just yesterday. You don't catch up for 48 years of neglect in six months, or a year, or two years, or even three years. Incrementally, I could probably, you know, stomach that, but the recommendations are not incremental. It's all or none, although during the slide presentation, we did talk about, you know, phasing it in. So we'll see where that takes us. But when you increase fees, ultimately, it trickles down to the end user. The people that pay sales tax, the people that buy stuff here, the people that work here, or that don't work here, that are on unemployment. We're seeing a reduction in sales tax, and even what we're getting has been deferred to July at the earliest. There's a reduction in employment. People are not working right now. A lot of people are not working. There's a huge increase in unemployment. That all has an effect on us, and this is all the things that I worry about, that even when we start to reopen, whenever that may be, you know, are we going to be able to survive? We're probably not going to see the same income that we're seeing before, and an increase in fees is just going to be tagged on top of that income. The group hardest hit by this pandemic are the ones that are least able to pay it right now, pay any fees right now, and that's who the fees are going to trickle down to. That's why they call it trickle-down economics. It starts at our level at the top, but it trickles down. And I'm not disagreeing that we need to increase fees, but I'm not agreeing with the way we're choosing to do it right now. When you go through the list, you'll see fee increases anywhere from 1% to 2,697%. The 2,697 is the parks fee. That's the one that's almost as old as I am, or outdated as I am, however you want to say it. But also, I want to point out that while it looked like some fees were going to go down, it's likely because we separated some fees. We broke out traffic circulation and mobility. We made two separate fee sources. But I think when you put those back together, you might see that it's still an increase, even though on paper, it looks like it's not. And I'm not saying anybody's, you know, playing hide the football or anything else. This is a lot of work, a lot of labor on the part of staff, the consultants, and everyone else, and I appreciate all that. But I want to make sure that if we do anything, we do it incrementally, that we do it in a way that everybody can survive. I'm afraid for our business community, and if we do this in the wrong way, we're going to harm that business community, and then when the business community is no longer here to be vibrant, we're going to suffer. And people will tell you that you don't live and survive simply on property tax alone. It's a group of everything combined together. I do have a little bit of heartburn over comparing us to Santa Clarita and Galita. Santa Clarita's about the same population, they're about 10 square miles bigger than we are, but it's a whole different group of folks that live there than will live in this area. And, you know, I'm not naive. There are lots here in Oxnard where the bare sand goes for a million dollars. And I remember my dad came up here in the 50s with his dad, and his dad said, hey, I got a place in Oxnard, called Oxnard, I got an option on 10 lots for 500 bucks a lot, we should buy them. And they came up here and looked at these lots, and my dad said, it's cold, it's wet, it's sandy here, this is worthless. Nobody will ever pay to live here. And they were looking at Hollywood by the Sea. They were looking at beachfront lots for 500 bucks a lot. So, you know, we have a lot of valuable property here, but you can't just adjust the fees upwards in one fell swoop. Your staff indicates in the report that this won't deter new development. I'm not so convinced. We're talking about businesses that if they don't reopen, when someone new comes in to reopen in place of them, that the fees are going to be much higher, and I'm not sure if it's going to be attractive or not. I don't know. I wish I had a crystal ball that told me where we need to go. We need to encourage businesses to come here. When the businesses come, they develop jobs, work, and everything else. Colorado calls it economic gardening. You bring in the businesses, you make it healthy, and they in turn develop jobs, they develop needs for suppliers, and it grows. I think that's the way I'd like to look at this. Again, I don't have a problem with increasing fees. I have a problem with increasing them right now, especially as fast as we're going to do it. Maybe if there were an incremental element, I might be more in favor of this, but I had real heartburn with this, the committee, Public Works and Transportation. I still have heartburn with it in its current form. I apologize, but in the shape it's in, I can't, I can't support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Well, this is difficult, and it is a difficult time that we were not anticipating to be here, but for many years, I have, of course, known that we need to update our development fees, and as one of us said, the glaring example is Sports Park, but it's also Campus Park, that we're not able to develop for the people who live here now. And there is tremendous angst about it and unhappiness. Cities have to provide services, and we have not really been able to provide all the services that people need and want, because revenue isn't there, because we, the development fees let certain developments go without paying perhaps what is the fair share. I'd like to see incremental increase. I'd like to hear from staff if that's how that could happen, and I think we do have to be fair to those developers that have already started to, to develop their mid-development so that we don't have any stranded projects. I would hope that wouldn't happen. But I do think that Oxnard is a desirable place. It will be more and more as things get tighter elsewhere, as things heat up inland. We're already seeing people wanting to live in a coastal community, people are not, even though it is currently expensive. I think we're going to see some changes in how people work. Ms. Lindholm mentioned in her letter that there's a softening of the commercial market, I believe, for office space. We already have an excess of office space in the county, and I think after people have learned to work from home, I think we're going to see some big changes. But one thing we won't see is people, less people needing housing. People need housing. And I would like to see an increase in the inclusionary percentage, and I'd like to figure out how we could do that. Maybe, Mr. Lambert, you can answer that question. Right now, it's at 10%. What would it take for it to go to 20%, say? Mr. Lambert, are you available?
Yes, I'm still here. That's an amendment to the Inclusionary Ordinance that would change the percentages that are required. And that's one of the things that, when we brought this to committee, the committee asked us to incorporate an update to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance at the same time that we update our housing element, which will happen over the next 18 months.
Well, that is something I would be in favor of. And, you know, the cities, we are an older city. Our infrastructure is not in the best shape. I think we should have all learned some lessons when we finally increased our wastewater rates, as painful as that was. It did help the city, and it's going to help the city now get through this crisis. I'd like to be optimistic and say we're, we are going through a hard crisis. I'd like to be optimistic and say we are going through a hard time, but I think things will be different. But I think we will be able to thrive because we're in a good place on the coast. Yes, it's going to be difficult, but we really do need to think about fair fees for, in a situation where they haven't been increased for a very long time. And so if we can phase that, and I understand we're talking about phasing in, correct? Mr. Lambert?
Yes. In the staff report, at the direction of the Public Works Committee, we offered an option for a phased-in approach, and we're open to council giving us further feedback tonight.
Okay. Well, that's what I would support. So I'll leave it there. I will support this.
Thank you very much. And we'll go now to Councilwoman Basua.
Thank you. I know this came to committee, and I had questions for Mr. Lambert and his staff, and those questions were addressed in the staff report. So thank you for addressing those. It's tough. It's a tough situation with the COVID-19. I understand the challenges. But just like Councilmember McDonald said, it's the perfect storm. These fees do need to get updated. I'm not one to have anything being subsidized through the general fund, especially in, but I agree with Councilmember McDonald that we need to phase these in. I did see some of the phasing in the report. And just with staff, and I'm sorry if I missed it, would it be possible to phase in any fees that are above the 50%? And make that amendment?
What staff had suggested is if the fee is increased by over 100%, it might be considered for a phased in, but the council could provide further direction that it's a lower standard of threshold.
Okay. I would like to hear from my fellow council members as far as, you know, I'm in for phasing this in over a period of time. I would like to start at 50%. And then, you know, anything that we are increasing above 50%, let's do a phase in, maybe over two years. Go, you know, start now, 50, 75, then 100. But this is something definitely that we should continue to look at. I know it was a lot of work from staff, and I appreciate all the work they have. But, you know, it has to happen. But I would prefer a phase in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. A lot of my concerns and questions have been covered by the rest of my colleagues, so I do appreciate that. And this is certainly not the best time, but it's something that has been coming, and it is necessary. I do support a phasing in as well, just based on the current circumstances, and appreciate the additional information that was provided through some of these concerns and the feedback from our city manager, especially knowing, you know, the current developments. So I think that's where, you know, one of my concerns is how many current projects, you know, may possibly be impacted. And could we see some of these projects be abandoned? Like, is that something that would happen? But I also wanted to ask with regard to the in-lu fees for affordable housing and whether, I believe the city manager mentioned that it's a practice to update the development impact fees every five years, but wondering, based on the comment made by Ms. Macri Ortiz, which I do agree that we do need to take a better look at our inclusionary housing. So once the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance is updated, would we be able to revisit the fees, the in-lu fees? Is there any guidelines on updating fees sooner than the practice of five years?
Yeah, Councilmember Lopez, Jeff Lambert here. Yes, on the second question, we would anticipate being open to reconsidering the inclusionary fee once we've updated the Inclusionary Ordinance. And so even though that will come back to council in much less than five years, the council could consider another adjustment to the fee along with the ordinance update in 2021. And on the other issue about pending projects, we do have, we looked at a list of those projects that are, have filed for a planning application but don't have an approved plan, approval in place. And there are several housing projects, ranging from the one that you heard testimony from earlier, the Four Project in River Park, which is 333 apartments. There's a project on G Street with 19 units, the Portofino Place, 90 units, Heritage Homes on Second Street in K, 27 units. And then there's a hotel proposed on the Espinade, the True Hotel. I think it's 80 something, maybe 110 hotel units. Mission Produce has a 52,000-square-foot office building that's pending and doesn't yet have an approval. And then we have a project called Arctic Cold, which is a food processing refrigeration project of a little over a half a million square feet of building. And then there's several smaller projects within the landing at River Park.
Great, thank you. So if I understood correctly from then, thank you for the list of, it's a really good memory, first of all. So the updates or these fees would impact projects that have not been approved?
So if we, if the fees go into effect immediately, then it would definitely affect these projects. If the council looks at the suggestion in the staff report, which is only projects that have received an approved planning approval prior to the fees, if you like that option, these projects would be impacted because they won't have a project approved by the time the fees go into effect. So they would be affected by the action on the fee adoption tonight.
Good. Thank you for that. And I think that, you know, would just be good to clear that difference. So I appreciate that. Thank you to you and the staff for this presentation and all the work that's gone into this.
Mr. Mayor, if we may, I'd like to ask our Public Works Director to come address the question several people raise with regard to why we compare to a few other cities that on the surface obviously didn't make sense to some people.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. On the surface, Santa Clarita and Galleta seem very different from Oxnard, and they are, except when you look at both of those cities, they're older cities. Well, Galleta's a new city, but the region, as a portion of the county, they've been around a long time. Then they had growth, and then they needed to improve their level of service, improve their traffic circulation. Traffic impact fees are not based on the wealth or poverty of a community. You look at what needs to be done in order to make traffic flow more smoothly or get more throughput. And the only difference, the only place you'll see a difference between communities is if the real estate, if you need to widen, the right-of-way may be much more expensive in one community versus another. But the projects that you need to do are pretty much the same projects. When we look at Ventura County, you know, Thousand Oaks was built as a mostly master-planned community. The streets are wide. They don't need to do a lot of capacity-increasing projects. And the same is true of Camarillo. So it was a little difficult for us to look purely at other cities in Ventura County and be able to say that we were really talking apples-to-apples there. So we reached out a little bit, especially for the traffic impact fees.
Mr. City Manager?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a series of questions, and I'm conscious of the fact that we still have a very heavy agenda, and it's already 8:28. But, Mr. City Manager, let's go ahead and take, you know, existing projects. And we did have the one individual who talked about, I believe at River Park, that, you know, what the impact would be to a specific project. And so one of the things that you've offered as a remedy for that is renegotiating the development agreement. So it's very hard on the fly to, for a decision-maker and a policymaker to say, okay, we'll renegotiate the development agreement. But, you know, what really is the bottom line? As an example, if he says, okay, it's going to impact, adversely impact the project, even with a phase in it, 2.5 million, I think he said. I can't remember exactly what it was. How are we going to be able to make sure that these projects continue? And it's a mystery, I admit, because somebody can say, that will kill the project. Do any of us really know from the pro forma? Do any of us really know whether that's the case or not? Or is it just, you know, I was a salesman. Is it a play on just getting fees reduced? So my question to you, Mr. City Manager, is what are we going to do to make sure that every project that we have right now continues to get built, and that these fee increases will not defeat those projects? That's my curiosity.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for that question. Generally speaking, we would evaluate each development circumstances, and we would look at what they have contributed. And, you know, frankly, these two larger developments have contributed a lot. They've built parks, they've made all kinds of capital improvements. I'm very confident that they also have the community's interest at heart because they've invested so much time and money here. I think that if we were negotiating with an incoming developer, then we would be concerned about games being played. But these folks have invested so much of their resources and time and energy here. And like I said before, it's also in our interest that they continue to succeed because it's good for this community as well. So we would sit down, we would renegotiate their development agreements, and we would work out a fair deal so that they will succeed.
Okay.
I think it's necessary. Like I said before, no matter when you do this, there's always going to be a batch of projects that need to have this negotiation.
Okay, I appreciate that. Could I have the staff, and I can't remember where I saw it, but there was a fee total amount, and on the right-hand side, it was like 85 million, and that was the current. But then, under the proposed fee increases, it's 150 million? Could I have that brought up again, please?
It's at the end, right? Yeah. Almost there.
Okay, there we go. So first thing I'd like to say is, I won't go back to those previous slides, but I was going to mention the fact that one of the things I said in the committee is that, you know, it's good to be more consistent with neighboring cities. And again, we know what is egregious is, as Councilman McDonald said, I mean, one fee not going up, you know, since 1972, I mean, a half century where this fee was not raised. I mean, simply put, that is irresponsible. I mean, I don't know how anybody else can say anything any different. I just, it's dumbfounded that we haven't done that. And here we are, a city that values families, and we talk about in America all the time, we talk about what are we doing for families? What are we doing for the youth of this community? And one of the things I know is, we're really park deficient. And I will say that a lot of that is exacerbated by the density and the overcrowding in the city. There's no question about it. So it's not necessarily that all of the plans were completely wrong. It's just that we've allowed a very, a very difficult situation to develop over, or over several decades now, where we have first, I mean, allowed overcrowding to take place, and then the state of California has done a lot to assure that, you know, the only alternative to overcrowding is building more housing unless somebody's life is at stake. So I just want to say that I, the concern I have is that prior to this slide here, and I want to get to this, is that we were a lot higher than some of our neighboring cities. And it's very hard sometimes to do benchmarking with, okay, Galleta and Santa Clarita and everything. I'm probably more concerned about neighboring cities like Camarillo, like Ventura, which have a lot of similarities to Oxnard, and certainly a lot of differences. But I want to tell my colleagues on the council, what I did is, several weeks ago, Monday, it was on a Monday, Ventura, Ventura City Council had their meeting, and lo and behold, they had this very same issue before them. And I wanted to see how that played out at the Ventura City Council meeting, and what they had to say about it. And it was very interesting what they had to say about it. Now, what they focused on was something along the lines of what Councilwoman Basua said. She said, I wouldn't like to see anything, anything that's going to be 50% or more, I'd like to see phased in. Well, in Ventura, and I think that's a good starting point of a discussion, in Ventura, it was 15%. And the way that they came up with a 15% is this overall revenue projection, this estimated revenue collected at build-out. And if we take the figure on the left, which is 150 million, forget the existing fees, let's take a look at the proposed fees. And what they did is, they came up with a fact, and the guy that was the consultant did the math right there on the fly, which was pretty interesting. And what they did is, they came up with the fact, and I, you know, I might not be 100% accurate, they weren't, they were going to, they were going to phase in anything that was over 15%. In fact, they didn't even, I don't even think they committed to a term, like a schedule of, like we've been proposing, a third, a third, a third, or 50 and 50. And what the consultant was able to show is, they were able to get 90% of their revenue, 90% by, because so many of the fees were remaining the same, some only had slight increases. Councilman McDonald mentioned that. He said, look, some of these fees are only going up 1% or 2%. All of that is sustainable. I don't think any of us can argue that. But what I have a problem with, I want to say to my colleagues, is trying to meet someone like Councilman McDonald, and all the council members have talked about this, Councilwoman Basua, try to meet them halfway. I mean, can you make up for this parks deficiency in three years that has been neglected for a half century? Think about that. We're going to make it up. It's a third, a third, and a third. I don't know. I could have it right. But is it fair, and is it good, sound public policymaking to take just that fee alone? I know we have a deficiency in parks. Absolutely, we have a deficiency in parks. And I might add, one of the only ways we've been able to meet that recently is by grants, by grant writing. And that's something we really got to take a look at. We got an $8 million grant for campus park. That's a lot of money. And so what I think is, is that there seems to be a consensus here. We heard Councilman McDonald say, I know they need to go up. I know the fees need to go up. But some of these, just overnight, I just, or even in a couple of years, I can't, I can't really stomach that. And that's on one side. And then we have Councilwoman Basua, who said, let's not let anything go up. Let's phase anything that is proposed to go in over 50%. So I don't know, Mr. Lambert, I'm just kind of curious to know whether or not we might in any way be able to, for maybe a sounder public policy decision, whether we're able to take a look at some of these suggestions that have been offered. And maybe the consultants, they're all probably back there going, oh, my God, I can't do math that quickly. But the consultants might be able to work with us on these fee increases and what, if we're going to be able to capture, you know, the majority of what we're able to capture, but take some of these really astronomical increases that are being proposed for just a couple of year increases. I just really have a problem with that. Mr. City Manager, I want to say, however, I think your willingness to renegotiate these development agreements does a lot. It comes 50% of the way for me. 50% of the way is, I don't want to see one project killed because of these fee increases. Not one. I mean, we cannot afford to do that. So I don't know what it's going to take. We need to make sure every one of these projects is built. So that's my question to the consultant is, I mean, I can't put my finger up in the air and say, Ventura. So I'll ask either Mr. Lambert, or how about we start with Mr. Lambert? Mr. Lambert, what can we do to capture the majority of this revenue, but take some of the more egregious, both deficiencies, and then therefore increases, and deal with them in a different way than just a couple of years?
Mr. Mayor, as a, as a policy perspective, we can, we can work this through. But I just want to remind you that the, it doesn't, it doesn't change the actual physical needs of the various facilities that we have to provide, that go, that support the, the demand when these developments come in, in the future. And again, based on Prop 218, and everything else that we have to abide by, we're going to have to make up for that one way or another.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just, it's, it's going to make this city's road to recovery even longer and more difficult. If I can point out, I understand, you know, what we're all saying here, which is that this, the neglect over the years is egregious, but as I also pointed out earlier, the development community also enjoyed the very low fees for a long time. So again, I think there's, we did propose a phase-in plan, and if you want, we can have the consultants work on what's, what we've heard recommended now. And maybe what we can do is, I'm pretty sure they could do it relatively quick, just, just a back-of-the-napkin right now, in terms of if we go to, you know, what we're recommending, and then if we apply that across the board, or if we go to a 50%. Mr. Lambert, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, there is a specific proposal in the report. The council wants us to go beyond that. I suppose we could take a pause and just put a hit, while you go on to the next agenda item, and then come back, and maybe put something together while we're still here tonight, and come back with a proposal on a phase plan that reflects council comments.
Okay, I like that. I know Councilman Perlo has a few things to say. I, the reason why I took this chart up here isn't just to look at 150 and 85, but it, you know, when we're talking about thousands of percent increases, none of it really makes sense unless you can actually see the numbers. So I just want to draw, you know, and go through it very quickly. We have almost a tripling of the growth requirement capital fee, even though that's proposed to be, right, Mr. Lambert, a 50-50 phase-in?
That's what we proposed as an option for the growth fee, yes. And then for the parks fee, it was a third, a third, a third.
Right. And then the traffic circulation fee, again, 48 to 66. You know, again, you know, not dealing with the math, and, but, you know, it's not a negligible increase, it's, it's an increase, but, you know, it's, it's, it's not a double or a tripling. And then the mobility fee, we understand that was recent, so that doesn't, park and recreation fee, then we see it there, a million, and now 20 million. So that, that by far is the most egregious. That's the thing that, you know, I just, that's the one, I don't know if that meets Councilman McDonald halfway just on that alone, that's what he pointed out. If, if, if we could do something that is, is going to address that, the public art program fee, that's, that doesn't seem to be out of, you know, that doesn't seem, and then the storm drainage fee is a doubling. So, you know, the city manager and, and this, the people, the consultants who put this together, they're telling us what I believe to be the truth. This, these fees, at one way or another, these fees have to get to this point. They have to. There's no question. Otherwise, as the city manager said in committee, we're subsidizing these projects, and, and we're always behind. And so I'm just trying to find some sound, you know, public policy rationale here, Mr. Lambert. And I think maybe your suggestion would be fine, if the staff could come back, this is a public hearing, and we could go on to the future item. But the, how long would that take you, Mr. Lambert, do you think, to do? Because Councilman McDonald has something time pressing that I want to be sensitive to.
Mr. Mayor, can I get, oh, I'm sorry. Was that Councilmember McDonald speaking?
Well, I was going to make a comment. I appreciate the offer to do this, kind of, almost on the fly, but I'm kind of a visual person. I've gone through this report four or five times, and if there's different options in there, I'm afraid I'm missing it. I would rather it come back with a phase-in proposal, so I can see it on, I'm just more of a visual person. I don't, I wouldn't be comfortable making a decision on, not that I don't trust staff, I trust them implicitly, but I prefer to see it in writing as opposed to have someone describe to me what I should be seeing.
Councilman McDonald, if you, just to point out, in case everyone's having that same problem, page 213 and page 214 of your overall packet speaks to the criteria that staff developed and what we came forward with, with recommendations for phasing in general. And within that, that's where you'll see the 100% criteria, as well as looking at adjacent communities, and then the phasing forward, as well as number six, we lay out six items there. The last item, number six, is where we speak to part of what the council's trying to get to, and who does this apply to, and how do we kind of protect those developments that are already underway. And the current proposal that we have there is that a project would have to already be approved, and then pull a permit in 12 months. Based on the feedback tonight, what we, what we've heard from the majority of the council at this point would actually be to move that up, and say, once they're deemed complete. And then also, if you are wagon wheel, basically, a river park, that you've already done these master planned facilities, that, that should be the criteria in which the new fees would apply. But going back to your overall concern of not seeing the phasing, again, I'll direct you, the council, to pages 213 and 214 of the report, and that's where the phased approach for the parks fee, as well as the phased approach for the growth fee are proposed. And then the, the reasons why we felt that moving forward with the traffic impact fee, mobility fee, and the remainder of the fees was appropriate to go all-in-one fell swoop.
And I see that, and I see that in the report, but those are not the recommended actions on the, on the first page. I would be more comfortable if those were, were formed into recommended actions, instead of us trying to do this on the fly.
I, I wanted to, I appreciate that comment. Councilman Perlo, would you like to make a quick comment?
Yes, yes, I would. And thank you, Mayor. I just, I'm extremely fortunate to sit as the Chair of the Ventura Regional Sanitation District. There was an executive board meeting today, participated by a council member from Camarillo and a council member from Ventura, Mr. Jim Freeman from Ventura. And Tim, you're absolutely right, when you said you watched the city council meeting, and the number 15% came up. The reason I bring this up to the rest of the council, and I hope we're listening, Mr. Friedman took the VRSD to task because wanted to know what the policy is for addressing fees, which was what the meeting was about. And it stated, he stated, Ventura readdresses these fees every two years. If we go back and look at the dates that our staff reports, every two years, holy Christ, how many addresses of the fees would we have had? We wouldn't be in the spot we are tonight. I mean, this idea of phasing it, I can understand it, I can understand it. But we're making it out like we, you know, we don't want to pay the price. We want to eat the dinner, but we don't want to pay the price. And the other part is, when we're talking about impacting people, this is going to definitely impact people. But we have impacted the working people of this city that have been here for decades. And we're going to impact them even more by not facing the music. And, and Mayor, that's something I, you probably were not aware of that, that they address it every two years. I will stand corrected if he wants to change his story, but that's what was said, and it was on tape. And the issues that we have not done, as a member of the audience and a member of this council, with three other council members that have been here a bit longer than me, have not addressed these fees. And we continually put it off, put it off. At the detriment to who? Developers? New home buyers? Or the residents in the city of Oxnard? And the integrity of this city? That's my comments, Mayor, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Councilwoman Basuah?
Thank you. To Mrs. Golden, thank you for pointing out the pages. As, as I'm seeing this, I'm, I would like to see a 50% implementation and do the phase-in. I understand what Councilman Perlo is saying, but at the same time, you know, the team, city manager's team, Mr. Lambert, we're moving forward regardless, some of these fees are going to go up. But we're trying to do it, you know, I don't think the way we're trying to do it is really fair to the community that is going to impact the most. So I, I think 100% is a little bit too steep. I would like to say, anything that we are increasing more than 50%, let's phase it in. And if I heard correctly, and if I understood correctly, we are going to be looking at these fees every five years. It's going to take some time. We're not going to recover from what happened in the past overnight. And I think we, we just need to understand that. This is a step in the right direction. I would like us to move forward, and I would like the fees to be increased immediately, and along with the staff report, you have a July 1st, 2021, and a July 1st, 2022, to get them up to 100% of what they should be. And then two years later, they will come back, and if we need to increase them again, hopefully that council that is seated there will do that, and it won't be such a hardship like it's going to be now. Thank you.
Councilwoman Basuah, can you, are you on page 213 of the staff report, where the six suggestions where the Assistant City Manager referred us to?
Yes.
Okay. So what are you saying about the park development fee, then? If you could be more specific about that, because I heard you say the one-third, one-third. What, what are you saying about that? Are you trying to extend the term for, from two years to five years?
No, I'm, I'm going to keep the same term, but I would like it to be, to be phased in at 50%, not 100%.
Okay.
So anything above 100% or more, they want to go ahead and increase. But I would like to, just for the whole, for, for, for everything, for the park, for the public, for the storm, anything that we are increasing more than 50%,
Okay.
I would like to implement that in a three-year period.
Okay.
And then what I meant with the five-year was, in five years, staff is going to review these fees again.
Okay. So your, your, your suggestion here is, is that, that anything that, that is going to be over 50% increase of the fees, that that be phased in for full cost recovery within three years? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Mr. Lambert, can I ask you a question? And that is, if in fact, and maybe that's what requires us to actually see that, but if in fact, we do do that, and the city manager is able to look at the existing developments and make sure that they're going to move forward and renegotiate those development agreements, how, how will that affect this? I think we need to go back to what, oh, there it is, right there. So we have the revenue collected, so if, if her, if her, I'm assuming that she's going to make a motion on this, and so it would be the growth requirement capital fee, that obviously is going up more than 50%. The traffic circulation fee, I think, mobility fee not, the park and recreation is definitely going up over 50%. The parks, the public art program fee is not, and the strain, the storm drainage fee is going up. So, so she, Councilwoman Basuah, you're suggesting that basically almost every one of these fees be phased in over a three-year period, because they're almost all going up over 50%? Is that correct?
That, that is correct. That is the motion that I'm making, that we phase these in, in a three-year period.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. I'd like to understand this a little bit better.
Okay.
What would be, what would be in effect immediately, or when we adopt this? 50% now, or no, no increase at all, until next year?
I, I am, I'm proposing that we do 50% increase now, then it's going to go another 25% 2021, and then the final 100% at 2022.
So I would, based on that, I'd like to get the city manager's reaction to that proposal.
I have to search for a few words, hold on. It's painful, I understand it. I sincerely understand the predicament here that, that you all are in, and I don't like bringing this kind of an item in this forum and at this time. It's, it's very difficult. So I think we can work this through, though. I'm sorry, I'm looking at our Assistant City Attorney to help me on this. I think there's a way to achieve the sense of the council, which is, we have to ease these in a little bit more gently.
Mm-hmm.
So we just got to figure a way to do it that won't be debilitating for us in terms of, again, providing the kinds of improvements that will be necessary.
Would it be possible to say, instead of waiting a whole year for another increase, six months from whenever this is implemented?
I, I'd recommend not doing that, because part of the thing with the whole fee structure is, the market also needs to be able to rely on it and be stable. So if, if our, if we signal the fact that we'll be changing this yearly, then that's not going to help anyone with their pro forma either. So I'm going to ask Mr. Rozell to see if he can walk through how we might be able to achieve what we're hearing from the council tonight.
Mayor, Mayor, may I ask a question? Before we have Mr. Rozell address, exactly, please, somebody clarify exactly what the motion is that Ms. Basuah made? So everybody's on the same page. What is the motion that she made?
Councilwoman Basuah, can you restate your, your motion?
Yeah. My motion is that anything that is being increased more than 50% gets phased in over a three-year period. So we will do a 50% increase now, do a 25 additional percent, 2021, with 100% of the whole recommendation, 2022. And I understand that we would be supplementing, and, and I understand that whole thing, I just, I would like to see this phased in.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Councilman Perlo?
Yes. So the, the other one, anything over 50%? I just want to get a clarification, because I want to know what I'm voting on. Every other fee that is under 50% is 100% implemented now?
Yes. Is Ms. Basuah, is that your?
Yes, that is my motion.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rozell?
Yes, I'm happy to discuss this. If you look at your recommended action for recommendation number five, there are two resolutions which are proposed. One would change the development impact fees for a variety of fees, and the second would increase the affordable housing in lieu fees. So based upon Councilwoman Basuah's motion, for these two resolutions, any fees more than a 50% increase over the existing fees would be phased in over three years, with, with a 50% of the total increase would go into effect for year one, 25% of the total increase would go in in year two, and 25% of the total increase would go over, excuse me, would go into effect in year three. Then as far as item number six in your recommendation, there would be no change. And item seven in your recommendation, there would be no change, and the proposed ordinance, ordinances would, could be adopted as, as is without the change.
Okay. Is the council clear on that? Are there any other questions after Mr. Rozell has made that clarification? Any other questions? So, so there's a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Basuah, it's been restated now several times. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Madrigal made the second. Madam City Clerk, the vote, please.
Councilman McDonald?
No.
Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Reluctantly, yes.
And Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
So the motion carries six to one.
All right. So that ends the public hearing. And thank you very much for everyone's patience with that. And now we will be going to back to the agenda to, I believe, the city council, the city manager's report, which is under item... It starts on page two, under item H, and then it goes to page three. And that is the COVID-19 update from the Director of Emergency Services, the recommendation is that the city council receive and file update from the Director of Emergency Services on COVID-19 local emergency. Mr. Nguyen, do you want to start this?
Mr. Mayor, real quick before you start?
Yes.
I'm still trying to deal with family issues from the events of the last 24 hours. I unfortunately need to step away from the meeting. I apologize, but I have stuff that I put off for this meeting. I need to get done.
I understand. Councilman McDonald, and good luck to you. And best of luck in your family members. Our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you very much.
Very best wishes, Brian. Very best wishes.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to start with the... There's a slide on the screen in the spirit of sharing some good news that has swept the world during this pandemic. This is something that one of our Public Works employees found as he or she was on her rounds picking up garbage in our community. Someone put out the sign on their garage, which we thought was extremely kind and very timely, given that it's Public Works Week. And I had been talking throughout this pandemic about how essential services here also include making sure that we are able to pick up garbage on schedule. So I'm going to leave that up here for a few minutes as I give you a very... I have a very brief update. And then Terrell is going to come up and give you an update about what we've been doing with his department and his staff. So very quickly, the governor has been moving to reopen business in California. And one of the things that he's allowed is for every county to make a variance request. In other words, to request to move at each county's own speed based on the facts on the ground in each county. And for us, what the Board of Supervisors approved today and the county will be submitting to the state in terms of accelerating through Phase Two, we're, as a county, we're going to be looking for agreement from the state to have our schools reopen this fall, to have carry out and a form of dining in at restaurants. But it's only for regular restaurants, not for bars and not for gaming areas yet. Related to that, and something that Mr. Herrera stated when he spoke in public comment earlier, we actually, in anticipation of that, we issued an order to allow this. But we had to wait for first permission from the state and then the actual guidelines from the county. Now, the county is encouraging folks, especially restaurants, to go ahead and register, to look at the draft guidelines and to prepare their business plans to take advantage of this as soon as possible when we get the authority. So very quickly, our businesses and all businesses who are eligible to reopen during Phase Two, you can find that, once again, in terms of your industry and your sector, at vcreopens.com. So again, that's V.C. as in Ventura County, reopens.com. And there you can register your business in preparation for reopening. And you can see what the guidelines are specifically to your industry. The other items that the county is going to be requesting in accelerating into Phase Two is also to reopen indoor shopping, including malls. And then they will... The other important thing they're seeking authority is to reopen the parking lots at the beaches. So we have to wait and see what the response is from the state. And then we'll inform everyone when, if and when we get the green light on each of those items. The other thing that we're doing here in Oxnard, and I want to say, I know, I appreciate Mr. Herrera's spirit about, you know, taking the lead and not following. But in responding to this pandemic, it's not a competition. We are, all the cities, we're actually working together as best as possible. Because what happens in one city, if it does it solely by itself, impacts what happens in other cities. Which is why we're trying our best to be consistent with how we treat the beaches and the parks. Because if one city goes to a hard closure and the neighboring city doesn't, it's going to drive traffic there. And the other reason we are slow to announce the... Our order for restaurants to start thinking about expanding dining outdoors. Because we want to be proactive and supportive of our local restaurants so that they can meet the physical space necessary for the distancing requirements that will be imposed. There are also county health department regulations that have to be adjusted or complied with with regard to individual restaurants and their ability to serve food outdoors. We are also evaluating here in Oxnard the potential of closing down certain streets or even parking lots, again, to support our local restaurants. So we have to study that to make sure that we can do it practically and that we can do it safely, but also that we can do it fairly across the city. Not every retail or restaurant neighborhood has the space outdoors where it's possible. And in many cases, the parking lots are private property. So we'd have to talk to the landlords there to make sure that we can do that. So we are exploring all those options. So I'm going to stop there. And I'm going to have Terrell come up, one of our department heads in charge of cultural and community services, to give you and the public a pretty good update about how that department has been responding to this pandemic. Mr. Harrison?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. On March 11th, as you all well know, we had to shut down our senior centers, our RSVP programs, our special population programs, as well as our boxing centers. On March 13th, we moved into a complete shutdown, which meant all centers, all youth centers, our special population and our special populations programs, our after-school programs, and our recreation classes. So as cultural and community services, we're responsible for the quality of life of this community. So our challenge was at the time was ensuring social distancing as well as following health recommendations, but still bringing these programs to the citizens of Oxnard for their quality of life, as well as being as useful to the city of Oxnard as we can. So I'm going to bring up Sophia Kimzie, our library manager.
Good evening, council and mayor and council. My name is Sophia Kimzie, and I'm the city librarian. I'd just like to tell you a little bit about what's been happening at the library since we've been closed in March. You'd be very proud to know some of the activities that we've been able to transfer from inside our four walls to mostly digital services. We've been able to provide a lot of different services by doing everything through social media. The Oxnard Public Library for virtual storytimes, we're posting those on Facebook and Instagram. And these storytimes are interactive ways that parents can keep their little ones encouraged to read. The books that we're sharing are available through our website to check out virtually. This week, we'll be having a storytime to celebrate Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And some of the storytimes that we've had over social media have engaged over 160 members at a time, just to hear a storytime. We have a very active youth services group. We're working with one website called Teen Health and Wellness. And through this website, we're encouraging teens to write about their experiences while they've been through COVID. Some of them are very personal experiences. We have several people who are involved in our teen council at the South Oxnard branch that are expressing interest in writing some of their feelings down and submitting them to this organization who's supportive of what we're doing in libraries. And they will be presenting students with certificates and honoring their work through our website and through their website as well. People can call the library at our general number, which is 385-7532, if they're interested in any of our adult services, or I'm sorry, our teen services. We also had a teen author Zoom event this last month. That entailed a teen author who spoke about her experience as in... With autism. And we had quite a few people join in on that Zoom event just to hear her speak about her own experiences. We also have virtual book talks. We are publishing those also on social media. And they're for all ages. These book talks just whet the appetite of any listener who wants to find a little bit more out about different genres, different formats that they can access through our website and still check out material through e-content. The digital library access, our website is very active. We're adding to our website almost daily. We've been working with the State Library Consortium regarding electronic resources. And we've been able to add over 200 Asian-language periodicals to our website lately at no cost to the city, just because of the situation that we're in with COVID. We're also adding about 70,000 eBooks to our eBook platform. And they cover everything from fiction, nonfiction, romance, mysteries, travel, crafts, cooking, anything you would check out in the regular library you can find online. All you need is a library card. And we're encouraging people to call us if they don't have a library card. We'll be able to help them get a card over the phone. We don't want the community to forget that we are there for them. All they have to do is give us a call. Our services are available in both Spanish and English. And lastly, I'd like to mention that we have launched our Senior Wellness Check. We are taking on calling about 10,000 seniors in the city of Oxnard that have registered library cards. We've been able to call about 2,000 so far. We're just checking on them, making sure they're doing well, making sure they're aware of our services, and be able to provide them with any answers to questions that they may have. So as you can see, there's a lot going on at the library. We're very proud to serve our community, educate our children, and keep people occupied during this pandemic. And now I'd like to introduce Renee Raichstraw, our Recreation Community Services Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. Renee Raichstraw, Community Services Manager. And I'm here to highlight a few ways that recreation has responded and continued to serve our community. I'll start off with our Parks Team. On April 7th, teams began to visit 53 parks, which we broke down into four routes. And the staff has continued to visit these parks seven days a week. Every park is visited at least five times a day, reminding residents of closed amenities and up-to-date guidelines. This is in collaboration with our Parks and Oxnard PD. We started the Beach Teams on April 24th. Two teams were stationed out at the Oxnard Shores Beach through May 9th. And will be returning this weekend. We also had a Business Resource Team put together in support of Development Services. We formed... Teams formed to assist business support. During Phase One, recreation staff placed calls to over 3,000 businesses to offer resources available to them during this pandemic. And in Phase Two, recreation staff is now out on foot, visiting businesses to share information on reopening and continuing operations for those businesses that remained open. As of today, a total of 1,350 businesses were visited. And we're hoping to reach 4,000 businesses by the end of this week. Food distribution has been a big area for us. We've continued at Senior Services with home-delivered meals. We are... We have approximately 350 to 400 participants on our Oxnard Senior Services distribution list for home-delivered meals, which is about a 75% increase. We are still serving congregate meals. They've changed to hot meals to go. And we're... Those meals are served at Wilson Senior Center and Palm Vista Senior Center at 11:30, Monday through Friday. It's a hot meal to go. And then they also receive a meal similar to the picture on the screen, which is provided by one of the local restaurants through World Central Kitchen. Lunches are also being distributed by the local school districts. And you can find up-to-date information on their websites for that. Food distribution in partnership with Food Share, the pantry, senior kits, and pop-up sites continue to be available throughout the city. In support of Food Share, we provided staff support at pop-up sites, which were brought about to meet the community need during this pandemic. We assisted with food distribution at Pell, Colonia, and Garden City Acres for about two weeks, distributing over 1,000 boxes those each week. We continue to work with Food Share and Oxnard Police Department in combining food distributions at College Park. So we moved from those three locations to the one location at College Park, so we can serve more. In the past six weeks at College Park, we have assisted in distributing over 10,000 boxes of shelf-stabled meals. And more information on pantries or pop-up sites can be found on the Food Share website. Virtual programming and mentoring has moved forward. YDC is a program through Pell that brings young people together with adult volunteers who offer guidance and support and encouragement. So we felt that this was important for us to continue this service. So mentors are meeting with their mentees bi-weekly for one hour to discuss job preparedness, scholarship applications, college preparation, career advice, and even coping with a COVID-19 crisis. Our Oxnard Special Populations has moved into a virtual realm. First, it was with our virtual art classes, staff-prepared arts and craft kits for six weeks of structured lessons that parents were able to pick up those kits. Participants meet virtually once a week with an art instructor. A total of 50 participants have connected virtually since April 16th. We also took Fun Club virtually and kicked that off on May 6. Participants meet every first and third Friday of the month, participating in themed activities such as Lotteria, bingo, karaoke. They even watched a live stream of Circus Soleil and trivia. They... Just having a good social hour for them. And our biggest... One of our bigger endeavors was the Virtual Recreation Center. Early on, staff came together to form a plan on bringing recreation activities into the homes of residents. Oxnard Rec at Home was formed and shared on all... Oxnard Rec@Home was formed and shared on all Oxnard Rec social media pages. There you will find a few exciting postings. Both the Oxnard and Wainimi after-school programs that are under the Recreation Division have created videos of activities allowing community members to participate in from the comfort of their home. We also have Community Connections, which are posted every Sunday to bring residents together to work on a project or idea. Themes are often associated with larger national efforts. Some of these themes have been a teddy bear hunt, heart hunters, chalk art. The week of April 26th, the Community Connection theme was our community superheroes. And that reached over 7,500 engagements. We also have a creativity challenge. Usually it's something that has to do with art, can be associated with the weekly Community Connection that I just mentioned. We did a Taco Tuesday during Heritage Week, Kids in the Kitchen during Heart Week, honoring mothers. And lastly, be on the lookout for Theme Thursdays. You'll, this, just this past week, we had Crazy Sock Day, we've had Matching Day. So it's just something fun for our community to participate in. Through this, the overall Facebook engagements have increased by 230%. So we know we're reaching our community members. I leave you with this final picture we shared with our community and encourage you to like both Oxnard Rec and Oxnard Public Library Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you very much. And just with the hour of 9:21, and I asked the city manager if we could, you know, take a look at these reports that we have. We have four reports that follow, and we haven't even had the council business yet. So that's like a projected 11:30 finish time, if we don't eliminate some of those items from the agenda. Any questions on this excellent presentation? Mayor Protem?
Thank you very much. And I want to thank, I want to thank the library staff, the rec staff, for stepping up and, as the governor always says, meeting the moment. But I want to make sure that people who are among our staff, who are more vulnerable to the virus, are protected and not, and given enough protection when they go out to the, to the different sites or to serve the meals or whatever. Can someone comment on that? City Manager, Ms. Golden, anyone?
Renee Raikstra here. Mayor Protem Ramirez. So, you know, we have a variety of tasks at hand. So some of our more vulnerable staff have continued to work at home. So we have that ability. But also, we provide our personal protective equipment to all staff. So gloves, face masks are provided to all of our staff when they're out in the field. Hand sanitizer.
Thank you, and thank you for this great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions by members of the City Council?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman Prillo.
Yes, it's a terrific report. I appreciate all the things that you're doing. I, I need to comment. I did have an opportunity to work at the College Park Food Giveaway, and the library staff was out there working several hours under the sun. Terrific job, everybody, all of the staff. And I need to address one issue. It was mentioned that the staff has helped with the beach, and so that they monitor the individuals that are going on the beach and make sure that they follow the protocols. You know, it's not supposed to be lawn chairs, ice chests, umbrellas, that type of stuff, to prevent the, what the health issues are. It's supposed to be social distancing. But when we monitor those parks, we leave all of the coastal access areas, because people park on, I'm going to go through the list right here. Sea Lane Way, Terramar Way, Moonstone Way, West Woolly Road, Breakwater Way, Outrigger Way, Whitecap Street, Wavecrest Way, Seabreeze Way, Sandpiper Way, Beachcomber Street, Surf Rider Way, Reef Way, Breakers Way, Driftwood Street, and Channel Way. And when the people go, the unfortunate, we don't have enough people to spread out to make sure that they don't. That's where all the people that are getting on the beach with the ice chests, the lawn chairs, they're staying too close together. That's where our system has sort of fallen down. No complaints with the people that are monitoring those tents. But there's, the rest of the council needs to know that. This is not as smoothly choreographed as it could be. And again, our police department makes a tremendous presence, but if they don't look through the coastal access skinny ways that people get up there and actually go out on the sand, they don't see it. And again, tremendous work. I appreciate the city management keeping our staff employed and keeping them working and doing goods for our community. Thank you.
So with, with no other comments, I would just like to thank the city manager and those department heads that have been able to repurpose several departments to think quickly to meet the demands for service, both for businesses with recreation, the library with going virtual, is just absolutely amazing. And I think it says a lot about the fact that the value of the library and the pressures that we face financially to make the library, you know, be viable and a viable service to the public. And Mr. Nguyen, I just like to say that members of the public have asked about, have asked me quite often about what your earlier comments were about the restaurants and extending that to the restaurants. And I hope that, given what you've said, that we can vigorously pursue that, because I think restaurants are going to have the biggest problem out of everyone, reopening and opening. They're the ones that tend to go in, into business and out of business the fastest. And I hope we can do everything we can to sustain that. So, thank you very much. So now we'll go to-
Mayor, may I ask a question before we get off this item?
Yes.
With respect to the children and the restaurants, who are we going to, who are we going to, as the city of Oxnard, the council, and the risks and liabilities involved with it, who are we going to listen to as the ultimate authority about masks? If I go into a restaurant to eat, I don't know if I'm going to be wearing my mask or just shoveling underneath the mask. But if, specifically with the libraries, if we open them up for children, the current issue and the current news about what happened with the school in France and some other situations where young kids got, everything was clear, and all of a sudden they have an issue, who do we deem to be the ultimate authority that we can hang our hat on as protecting us from any liability? Maybe the city manager or the city attorney can address that. Please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll take that question very quickly. Ultimately, we need to follow the guidance of the, both the state public health department and the county's public health department. And, and that's, and that's what we will do. I don't think there's a liability issue here with regard to the masks. Or actually, to be, to be very specific, face coverings.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you very much. And Mr. City Manager, you've concluded your city manager's report, I presume?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, okay, very well. Now if we go to council member comments, and we'll go ahead and start with Councilman Madrigal.
Thank you very much. Before anything else, I want to congratulate my youngest sister, Leslie, for she received her bachelor's degree this Saturday in her virtual commencement. And to all college graduates in this past week, congratulations. I know this wasn't what you expected your graduation to be. And I know you're going to be facing a tough job market, but know that you will perceive and do well. You are all very strong individuals, and you will go back and help out, not only your families, yourself, but your community. Your hard work will not go in vain. So, congratulations. And then lastly, back a little bit, couple, probably about a minute ago, council member Prillo was talking about face masks or face coverings. Please lead by example. I've, you know, a lot of us talk about, you know, be, protect yourself, do the right thing. But we don't follow our own advice. I've seen state leaders, county leaders, leaders in, at the local level, who do not follow their own advice and are not following the guidelines set by the county or by the state. So, you know, we have to lead by example. It's nice for us to be up here and telling people to put their face coverings on and doing the right thing. But a simple drive around the city of Oxnard, you see that a lot of people are not following their own advice. So please lead by example. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Basuah.
Thank you. I have no comments tonight.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Let me turn my camera on and show you the masks I wear in public. Thank you, Councilman Madrigal, for telling us. But I don't have to wear it at home. But thank you for that advice, that suggestion. A couple of things, I want to congratulate the graduates too, who are just, they're marked forever by 2020 as the year of the pandemic. But I have faith in our young people that they're going to rise to the occasion. Things are different, but we will innovate, we will be healthy. And the older generation has to support you in every way possible. I also want to congratulate our community on the initiation of the Strata Ventura County Clean Energy Battery Solar, which is a replacement for the Mandalay NRG proposal of Puente. A tremendous victory for our community when they said it couldn't be done. I want to thank my colleagues on council who supported that 100 megawatts of battery storage. It is the future, and it's here with great community benefits and project labor agreement, union labor building. It's just, again, Oxnard's been a leader, and I hope continues to be. I, I want to ensure that everybody does complete the census. Census is critical to our financial future. Get every single person, baby, newborn, child, older person, regardless of your immigration status. You count, you're a human being, you're a person. Please register for the census. It is safe, it's secure, it's important. I also want to say that while we are looking at reopening, I really appreciated what city manager Nguyen said about, we are all going to go together in our counties, so we won't have certain cities being overloaded. Remember, we, the virus is not going to go away until we have a vaccine. And many, many people are going to have to be vaccinated. That's a long ways away. So we're going to have to be careful, especially if we want to protect our loved ones, our vulnerable people, and more. So please remember to stay safe. Appreciate everything everybody's doing to get us through this. I hope we come back stronger and have a better sense of what the human beings need in our community, to be safe and to be housed and to be healthy. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Prillo.
Number one, number one, I'd like to read a letter that's in the Star today, or yesterday. And it was also in the LA Times, from a gentleman, I don't know, but from a gentleman from Oxnard. It's called "Politics Dividing America." "I have been trying to comprehend our country's inability to come together in a way that will work towards mitigating, ending, and ultimately recovering from this pandemic. I am left with one word, politics. Everything is now viewed through the lens of political agun. The courts, the truth, everything is now viewed through the lens of political affiliation. Science, truth, business, guns, the courts, beauty parlors, face masks, vaccines, restaurants, healthcare, and the elderly. Sadly, I have no immediate solution to offer. I have a hope that we might have a, take a breath and acknowledge that we have more in common than this political divide. Values of family, community, and country should bind us in aspiring for a better nation, a better world for all. Randy Sanford, Oxnard." Tremendous words. Tremendous job. Congratulations, Mr. Sanford. And congratulations to the Star and the Times for printing your letter. I would like to agree with Mayor Protem. The power plant that was pushed for the beach and the fight by the residents that fought that, saying that there could never be an alternative energy, and what has come about in El Rio is a tremendous, a tremendous accomplishment for people that are fighting for a cleaner environment for our world. It's a big deal. One last, a couple of last things. The short-term rentals and the issues of the people on the beach, specifically in the beach area. If we have a short-term rental, I've been assured by the city, if we have a short-term rental that is a problem site, if the city is made aware of an address, they will address the site by the address. And the last thing, it's often overlooked. I mean, there was a public speaker at the end of World War II. Memorial Day is coming up. And it's often said, the people that gave their lives. I was brought up that it was a whole lot different than giving your life. These people did not go on suicide missions. These people that fought and died for this nation, their lives were taken from them. I hope we take a minute to honor those people and all veterans, but the ones that have lost their life, that never got a chance to do what you and I are doing, take another breath. We should never forget that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lopez.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank all our staff at the city and everyone out there who is working under these current conditions that are very challenging for everyone and being flexible in the work that they're doing. And I too would like to join the rest of the council in congratulating the many college graduates who were unable to have a proper ceremony this, this past weekend. And I do want to especially congratulate my niece Stephanie, who graduated from Cal State Northridge this weekend. And recognizing that a lot of these students have gone through very challenging times in the last couple of years with fires and local disasters that have impacted their, their educational experience. And this is a culmination of it in this manner. So we are all proud of all of our students here in Oxnard for the work that you're doing. And we look forward to seeing your contributions in our community in the coming years. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you very much. And I'll just conclude by saying to my council colleagues that it was recently brought to my attention that because the California Coastal Commission has not been able to meet, because one of its members, and it might have been the chair, and several of the staff members of the Coastal Commission, that the ordinance that the city council passed several months ago on short-term rentals has not been approved by the Coastal Commission. And right now, it appears that we're slated to have this go before the Coastal Commission, sometime in July or August. However, in the interim, that presents a real challenge for not just city staff, but the beach community. Arguably, the pandemic has really pushed people to the limit. And people are going to want to get out. It's probably unlikely, although we all wish that we could return back to normal faster and go, you know, fly to various locations. People are probably going to be traveling in their cars, and they're going to be staying closer to home this summer. And I anticipate, and I think many anticipate, that short-term rentals are going to be in real high demand for the summertime. And my concern to express to the members of the council is that we do not have the resources. I don't care what anybody says. We do not have the police, we do not have code enforcement, we don't have enough people that can really enforce a situation with short-term rentals that will potentially escalate. So what I'd like to do, Mr. City Manager, and just talking about it openly, because I've had a discussion with the city manager about this. Number one, I'd like to send a letter to the Coastal Commission and ask them if we could get our ordinance on an earlier agenda. That's number one. So that we can potentially avoid a lot of, a lot of money unnecessarily spent on overtime hours, trying to, you know, keep this situation under control. And it reminds me somewhat of the beach situation in many parts of Southern California. If the weather's really nice, and, you know, it's kind of like a convergence of a lot of different issues. So the first thing would be writing a letter to the Coastal Commission or any, any other method to try to get our, you know, through a formal request to get our issue- other method to try to get our, uh, you know, through a formal request to get our issue heard for them earlier. And the second request I have for the city manager, and he's agreed that, you know, they're gonna pursue it, is that while we wait for that Coastal Commission hearing uh to approve our STR ordinance, that we get up and running when it comes to enforcing um the STR ordinance that we have. In other words, the staffing levels, the training, the hiring, anything that it's gonna take to get us to the point where once that is approved by the California Coastal Commission, that our staff is ready to, ready and willing uh to go out there and make sure that, uh, and I use the word enforce, it's really to get people to comply with our new ordinance. So I just wanted to say, um, I think it's gonna be a great summer, uh, and I, I, I want to dwell on the positive, not on the negative, uh, but I, given our budget situation, given the strains already on the police department, we were talking about the Fourth of July, over 100 individuals um from the police department trying to control people, you know, hurting themselves with uh with fireworks. I just uh want to avoid a, a second uh possible tsunami of uh, uh, of an uncontrollable situation at the beach. So uh that's my formal request, that we do that, and the city manager has assured me and, and Mr. Lambert that that's exactly what we can do. There's nothing that will hurt us from pursuing getting that on an agenda earlier. And at the same time, I believe um getting ourselves up and ready to um uh make sure that we can um abide by the terms of the ordinance and that we can carry that out as we, as we wish. So uh that's my, those are my only comments. So now, uh, we'll go to the information consent agenda, and I'd like to ask any city council members, uh, you might have texted me on this, but I, I haven't been able to find those texts. Any city council members want any of the information consent agenda pulled for discussion?
Um, Mayor, this is the city clerk. While they're getting their requests together, can I just mention that um on L1 for the minutes of the May 5th meeting?
Yes.
I made an error on item M1, the vote for that item. Um, I put that it was a 7-0 vote for all three of the recommendations, when in fact it was a 7-0, 7 to 0 vote for recommendations 1 and 2, and a 6 to 1 vote with Councilmember Madrigal dissenting for recommendation 3. So I'll make that um correction before the minutes are finalized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any uh, any of these information consent items that the council would like pulled for discussion? Okay.
None, none for me, Mayor.
Okay, so all I'm gonna do now, and I, I'm just gonna access the um, um, let's see, just to make. Um, all right. Um, let's see. All right, now I got it. And let's just take a look here, and we do have two speakers on the information consent agenda, and the very, and each one of those speakers will have three minutes. The very first speaker um is Philip Molina, to be followed by Larry Barbering, please.
Hi, Phil, it's Michelle from the council meeting.
Yes, is it my turn?
Yes, you have three minutes to speak on uh the info consent agenda. Please go ahead.
I appreciate it. I'm speaking on item L2, I believe, and I'm asking the council to vote against it. A couple of things, I was reading the agenda report, but I also called cities in, in Ventura County because they're referencing cities in Solano County. Thousand Oaks, the mayor must review and approve list of checks. Fillmore, city council approves the list of checks before they're signed. And Santa Paula, the accounts payable and payroll check registers are on every council meeting for council and public review. In Moore Park, they list all checks, warrant registers in the city uh council agenda for approval. In Simi Valley, the mayor must sign all checks. In Camarillo, the agenda is approved before the checks, wires, et cetera, are dispersed. And you have Thousand Oaks, Fillmore, Santa Paula, Moore Park, Simi Valley, Camarillo, and until recently, Oxnard demanded that at least one elected official sign all the checks. Um, I went to, and looked at the San Luis Obispo County Grand Jury Report, and where it says, and I'll just read bits of it, uh, "We determined that the city treasurer in uh this particular city, Tascadero, has been lax in adhering to the state government code requirements that the elected treasurer sho- shows all interest in the financial oversight responsibility that are part of his job." What they're saying is he lacked the, and, and the uh desire and the need to review the financial uh and do the financial oversight as required by state law." And that's from the grand jury report on page 3. On page uh 5, uh, they identify that there's 174 cities that have um elected city treasurer. That's 47% of all the cities in California have elected city treasurers out of 368. So the, the uh concept of L4, in essence, uh, taking away all the statutory duties of the city treasurer, putting it into an appointed employee, is um eliminating the function of the city treasurer. Uh, the city treasurer's functions are also listed very well. They, to prepare monthly reports, to prepare dispersment reports, fund balance reports, to uh check all dispersments of fund balance, uh, and to file copies with the city council. Uh, these are things that are required by statute as well as to um collect license fees.
Thirty seconds.
Is that, that, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. The state law gives the treasurer supervisory and monitoring powers over the city's finances. So for these reasons and others that I won't get to, that these um cities in San Luis Obispo, they all tried to have elections to move their elected treasurer into an appointed. All three of them lost, and I think one of them did it repeatedly and lost every time. And so I, I'm concerned that city manager is asking council to take this action because he knows that if he went to the public, as is required by state law, to vote on this, they would say, no, we want an elected city treasurer to be responsible as a department head full-time. I would ask that you please to reject L2. Thank you very much for the time. Good evening.
Thank you very much. And the last speaker, Larry Barbering, please.
Hi, Larry, it's Michelle from the council meeting. Please go ahead with your three minutes.
Appreciate it, uh, and thank you for that, that extra second, uh, when I spoke earlier. Uh, concerning L3, the senior nutrition plan, uh, it's always better uh for various things that we have, uh, the money stay here, uh, locally, but if not, it's great that you guys are getting, in this case, uh, grants from the county, uh, federal, state, et cetera. Um, and uh because our tax dollars do go to something like this, but I, I want to thank those who are uh, um, I assume that need money from this plan are going to our deliveries from Wilson Center, uh, and Palm Vista, and also the uh, the uh to-go meals, uh, because look, so far, so good. They've been pretty, pretty, you know, they've been, been going very well, and they've expanded even the deliveries from the original list that they had. I want to thank Fernando and Myra, particularly at Wilson Senior Center, um, and they, they do ask for donation, case $3 for those who do the to-go, and for the delivery, it's up to 15 for like every week and a half, two-week delivery. Um, but they're not hardcore about it, they're, you know, they're not, they barely mention it, they, they have it on the website. It's great to look on their Facebook too because they will tell you on Friday night normally what the menu's gonna be for the next week, and then you just call in and say which, we're gonna pick it up for this, that day, you know, maybe all five days, average of three days, let's say, or, and uh that works really well. Uh, and it also gives the elderly, so that they can get a ride in the car as you go pick up the to-go food, and they stay in the car, of course, but uh gives them a little chance to get out a little bit, uh, and uh it really, you know, helps in getting the meals for them, even middle-class elderly, made just for, you know, uh, poor elderly there. And uh there is less of a homeless problem over there at Wilson. That was one of the things that they'd come over from the park and bother folks sometimes, but uh that's uh been far and few between during this time. So uh, I wanted to thank you, those running in, thank you for uh getting the grant. God bless.
Thank you very much, and that ends the speakers on the information consent. Is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
Good. What's the pleasure of the council on the information consent agenda?
I'll move the recommended action there.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, we have a motion by Mayor Protem, and it appears a second by um Councilmember Lopez.
Mayor Flynn?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Parello?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
Councilman McDonald? Oh, I'm sorry, he's out of the meeting. Um, Commissioner Andrade? Okay, I see your mouth moving, I believe you're saying yes. Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I'm not sure if Commissioner Vega is with us or not. Doesn't look like it. Okay, so um that carries 7 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, now, Mr. City Manager, we're just 10 minutes before our 10 o'clock time, and um I would like to ask you if uh all four reports are time-sensitive.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that the council uh give us the patience and vote to go beyond 10 o'clock. Um, these are um somewhat time-sensitive. There's one that we could put off, but my concern is, given that it's coming up to the end of the fiscal year and we have a lot of heavy lifting to do in June and in, and also July, so what I would not want to do is stack up those meetings because we have some very heavy, meaty issues that you all will need to debate in the, in the following council meetings. So I'd appreciate it if we.
I'd move that we move, take the items tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all right, so there's uh, we need uh then a vote on that, uh, we don't need to take a, well, why don't we take a roll call vote on that, just because of the uh thing here. Madam City Clerk, uh, Councilmember Parello has moved that we do it, is seconded by Mayor Protem. Can we take a vote, please?
Councilwoman Basua?
Aye.
Councilmember Madrigal?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Parello?
Yes.
Mayor Flynn?
Aye.
Motion carries 6 to 0.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, I'm just curious, you know, which of the items um was the one that you said wasn't as time-sensitive, because I like to start that before 10 and just stick, stick with the fundamentals of our ordinance about, about, you know, the uh um exigent circumstances to continue the meeting?
Well, it's actually the one that um regarding the auditor's contract, but I need, I need a few minutes for Mr. Riper to walk over here from the other building.
Oh, that's fine.
We do have, we do have our um consultants who have been on the phone all night, so it might be good if we can go to, if we can start with number 2 and then go back to the batting order, if that's okay.
That's fine. Why don't we start with number 2, and that's on page 6 of the agenda. This is under the city manager's department, the subject, City of Oxnard Environmental Resources Division Cash Handling Report. The recommendation is that the city council receive and file the internal auditor report on the Environmental Resources Division Cash Handling. This did go to the Finance and Governance Committee, it was approved 3 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, I believe, I see Mr. Umm on the uh screen, and he will be making the presentation. This was their audit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. Thank you for letting this one go into the night, we appreciate your patience. Um, I've been told I can speak fairly quickly, so I will be very mindful of your time and be efficient, but go through the information as, as needed. Um, my name is Henry Umm, I'm from Price Paying Company. As you may know, we serve as the internal auditors for the city of Oxnard. I'm here to present the results of the Environmental Resources Division Cash Handling Audit Procedures. And so this report, as mentioned by the city manager, has already gone to the Finance and Governance Committee on April 14th, and it passed with a motion of, or, uh, I'm sorry, 3 to 0. Okay? Next slide, please. So just a quick background of why we conducted this audit. As you could remember, back in 2017, we conducted what is called a risk, citywide risk assessment, where we have to determine which departments within the city were uh vulnerable to higher risk. So we had to conduct that process at that time. Because the environmental division handles a tremendous amount of cash, um, anytime you handle cash, it's always inherently higher risk. So that was already on our radar. In addition to that, we also received information from a whistleblower that had concerns over cash handling over the Environmental Resource Division. So therefore, a combination of those concerns elevated this audit to be conducted in this year 2019. So uh we have completed that audit in September of 2019, and here to present this to city council for report. Okay, next slide, please. Some of the key audit objectives. So what are we trying to accomplish here? First, we're trying to determine whether there's any potential non-compliance with cash handling policies and procedures that may lead to opportunities for misappropriation or theft of cash receipts. As I mentioned earlier, anytime you have cash, cash sitting around, cash handling is always higher risk. So we want to know whether the uh division has the necessary policies and procedures in place to safeguard those cash um handlings. And secondly, examine the department's control systems over the cash handling process. Essentially, what we're trying to do is take a look at the controls that are in place. There's two components to internal controls when we look at it. The first part is the design, and the second is the implementation. You can have very well-designed controls, but if it's not implemented properly, then there are issues that can be present. So those were the two key objectives that we focused on in this audit. Next slide, please. I want to quickly touch upon what this audit isn't designed to do. So this audit is not designed for us to specific, look for misappropriation fraud. That's not what it's designed. We're not here to conduct a witch hunt. You know, if um the procedures that we performed identified any specific vulnerabilities in the system, we obviously considered it and expanded our audit procedures as a result of that. Um, but uh we would, if there were any specific fraud concerns, we would have to um, you know, develop specific procedures for that. So this is more of an overall overview of the cash handling procedures. However, if there were any instances of misappropriation or fraud that came to our attention, we would certainly show that with city council and city management. Next slide, please. So the scope of the audit was a 30-month period. We evaluated transactions at the ER Division from July 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2018. And so as a result of that process, we reviewed the um division's cash handling procedures, and we tested compliance with internal policies and procedures over cash handling and recording. So we talked about internal policies, internal policies, that's really the focus of this audit that we're presenting to the council. The population of transaction was over 165,000 individual transactions over that 30-month period. This totaled about $4.2 million of net revenue to the city, of which 3.4 is collected in cash, 2.4 collected in cash, uh, and I'm sorry, credit cards, and 1.6 million being dispensed in cash at the buyback center. So if you do the math correctly, you get to a net of 4.2 million over that 30-month period. Next slide, please. So before we conduct any audits, it's always important for us to understand what we're auditing. And we always say, in whether it's external audits or internal audits, you can audit what you don't understand. So what we first did was we conducted a physical tour of the Environmental Resource Division's planning and operation. We interviewed um key management personnel, we interviewed accounting personnel, as well as uh, you know, customer service staff. We wanted to better understand how they were um implementing these procedures and also reviewed the policies and procedures that have been outlined in the uh, in the guidance. We conducted what is called walkthroughs, and accounting walkthroughs are when we trace a transaction from inception to inclusion. So from the time a customer walk, uh, drives up and is ready to, you know, um, uh, dump their trash at the Environmental Resource Center, what does that process look like? So we sit down with each phase, well, we sit down with the employees and walk through each of those phases to see how that transaction gets included overall in the city's financial records. So we did that as a part of the, the audit process. So in terms of sample selections, we tested about 250 transactions, which we believe would give us enough information to make a determination on the effectiveness of the internal control structure at the Environmental Resource Division. Okay? Next slide, please. So what are some of the procedures that we conducted? The first one is reviewing the weight tickets issued by the scalehouse operators for each transaction. You know, it, it, obviously, each transaction should be supported by some level of documentation, and essentially what we're trying to identify is whether a transaction exists. You know, are these fictitious transactions? Are they ghost transactions, or do it, they actually, did they actually occur? Secondly, we wanted to review and confirm that the municipal solid waste, or what is called an MSW deposit, uh, disposal ticket, was actually issued by the scalehouse operator in accordance with the policy and procedures of the Environmental Resource Division. So is this transaction properly documented? What information do you have available to confirm that this actually takes place? What information do you have available to confirm that this actually takes place? And so this is a manual ticket that gets issued in addition to the automated ticket that gets issued by the scalehouse operators. Next slide, please. We conducted a total of eight procedures, and procedure three through six deals with how information comes from the scalehouse operators and gets recorded in the Environmental Resource Division's accounting. So for procedure number three, we reviewed the cash reconciliation sheets submitted by the scalehouse operators for each day that was selected. So ultimately, what we're trying to do is confirm whether the admin tech, and this is the person that's within the Environmental Resource Division that's responsible for handling the cash, whether they're verifying that correctly or not. Procedure four was to determine whether all cash received has been properly reconciled by the appropriate designees. Next slide, please. Procedure number five deals with comparing the cash amounts listed on the daily main cash reconciliation. So this is a report that gets filled out by the customer service representative, and it's submitted by the scalehouse operator. So those, that information contained on that report should reconcile to the underlying detail on documentation. And procedure number six was reviewing and comparing the amount listed on the daily deposit sheet generated by the admin tech to the total amount of cash and credit cards reported on the cash reconciliation. So a lot of accounting terminology, but in essence, what we're trying to do is determine whether there's the appropriate level of review and approval in each of these phases. Next slide, please. Procedure number seven deals with reviewing and comparing the cash amount listed on the consignment log to the cash amount listed on the deposit summary. So now we're dealing with transactions that the Environmental Resource Division is transferring cash receipts over to GARTA. And GARTA is the armored security transportation company that the city engages with to transport these funds to the Treasury Department. So procedure number seven deals with whether the admin tech properly prepares that report and reconciles back to the consignment log that maintains the history of what gets sent over to GARTA. And lastly, procedure number eight, confirmed cash collections were picked up by the armored security transportation GARTA within a reasonable number of days. So the Environmental Resource Division's policy right now doesn't have a set amount of days in which, when cash is received, how often is it picked up? There's an unscheduled timeline of when cash is received. We believe, as a matter of best practice, that three days would be reasonable. So if cash was received and reconciled on Monday, it should be picked up no later than Thursday of that same week. So three days is what we believe to be a best practice. Okay? Next slide, please. So a quick summary of the results of our test. Procedure one, again, whether a wait ticket was generated by the system. We're happy to report we had no exceptions when we tested these 250 transactions for identifying whether a wait ticket transaction was issued by the system. Okay? Procedure number two was related to whether a MSW disposal ticket was actually issued. And the reason why an MSW disposal ticket is issued is because it serves as a backup. If the system ever went down at the Environmental Resource, there needs to be a mechanism for people to still record transactions. And so that serves as a backup. And it's almost like a cross-check as well for the digital ticket, as well as the manual ticket. We noted 49 instances in which the disposal ticket was not available or retained in the department record. And we'll talk a little bit about why that's such a high number later. Okay? Procedure number three deals with whether cash reconciliation sheet has proper approvals. We noted 13 instances in which the cash reconciliation was unavailable or missing. So out of all the other items that we tested, we did have, we did see evidence that it was approved, it was reviewed, but there were 13 instances in which the cash reconciliation sheet was unavailable to review. Procedure number four deals with deposit amounts tying to the reconciliation reports. And in this instance, we noted that there were six exceptions in which the deposit type by detailed report, which is a report generated from the system, was not available or missing from the department record. So again, we could not confirm whether it matched or not. The information was unavailable for us to validate. Procedure number five deals with cash on the daily main reconciliation matches the underlying support. So we noted in this audit procedure, two instances in which the daily cash reconciliation report was not available. So you can see the theme here, not available, not available, not available. So again, we cannot confirm whether it was wrong or correct. It was unavailable for us to review. Okay? Next slide, please. Procedure six, the deposit, the daily deposit total matching what the scalehouse operator submitted. And this was a big exception. We noted 113 instances of the 250 that we reviewed in which the totals did not reconcile. And again, this will relate back to that procedure number two. There's a common theme of why we believe, and actually why the Environmental Resources Division believes there are a high number of exceptions. But there were 113 instances in which the amounts did not match. Procedure seven deals with whether the consignment log that's maintained for transactions sent over to GARTA matches what was sent. And in this particular procedure, we only noted two instances in which the amount did not match. Fortunately, in those two instances, the difference, as you see here, was only $21. So very nominal as a result of our test, but a difference that should be noted. Okay? And lastly, procedure number eight, the amount of days in which the cash was reconciled by the Environmental Resource Division and picked up by GARTA. In the 201 transactions that we tested, we noted that there were three instances in which the time elapsed from deposit to pickup by GARTA was beyond three days. And the first instance was 26 days, the second one was 52 days, and the third one was 167 days. Okay? So in a nutshell, next slide, please. Here's a quick summary of what I shared in detail for each of the procedures, the procedure description, the number of transactions tested, as well as the exceptions that we've noted as a result of those procedures. Next slide, please. So what are our recommendations? As a result of the audit process, we identified a number of recommendations to help strengthen the internal control structure at the Environmental Resource Division. These recommendations have been shared with the department's management, as well as city management, and they are in agreement with the recommendations. And they actually have presented the response as well in the full report. So the first recommendation is the fact that the MSW ticket issuance is done inconsistently. There are instances in which it is issued, and some instances that it's not. From our review, we can't narrow down whether it's just one person or a couple people. It seemed to be pervasive enough. So we're saying that this process was developed for a reason. It strengthens the internal control to ensure that a transaction is supported by that level of documentation. So we are recommending that the division complies with their internal practice, internal policy of having their deposit... It really comes down to training the staff to ensure that they understand that that's needed. And again, the department concurs with this recommendation. Next slide, please. The second recommendation, timely reconciliation of cash. And this is important, right? You don't want cash just sitting there unaccounted for. And currently, there's a time lag between cash is counted and dropped off by the scalehouse operators. And so we're recommending that the department have set schedules of when cash will be picked up. So we're thinking, as a matter of practicality, if you schedule for pickup on Tuesdays and Fridays, and that's a set schedule, it eliminates the thought process of when GARTA is going to come. So you don't have to pick up the phone and call them. They know every Tuesday and Friday you're going to pick up whatever you have available. They will pick that up. So a set schedule seems like an ideal solution to alleviate that concern of cash just sitting there unaccounted for or not picked up by GARTA. And anytime you have cash sitting within a department, it's a risk and potential theft. So you want to eliminate that opportunity. The department concurs with this recommendation. I will note that the department mentioned that due to a lack of staff that caused the delays in when GARTA actually picks up those deposits. Next slide, please. So here we have, I'm sorry, I kind of mixed up the number two and number three. So number three was the set number of days picked up for a fixed schedule. If we can go back to our previous slide. Timely reconciliation of cash. Okay, so my apologies. So what I mentioned earlier was actually recommendation number three. Recommendation number two is timely reconciliation. This goes back to that procedure number two, which had a significant amount of exceptions. There was over 40 out of 250 tested. And there was just a delay in once the cash is received by the accounting technician, when that actually gets counted and reconciled. So we believe that the division should also have set schedules for when cash is counted. So if the accounting technicians know that I need to count cash on Monday and Thursday, that set schedule is built in to their responsibilities and duties so that they know during that time period, they need to count the cash. So that eliminates the potential issue of cash sitting down as well. Okay? Two slides, please. Recommendation number four. Thank you. Staff resources. A lot of what the department is attributing to the exceptions is really a lack of staff resources. And when we talk to the customer service representatives, when we talk to the accounting technicians, they also acknowledge that they have a lot of responsibilities. There's short staff, there's vacancies, and they're having to pick up other people's responsibility. So because of the volume of transactions, we're recommending that the department evaluate whether a full-time equivalent analysis is justified to determine whether these responsibilities can be allocated amongst existing employees or whether additional full-time equivalents should be hired and retained to alleviate this concern. And we think it's a valuable analysis, because again, anytime you're dealing with cash of this volume, you have to perform a cost-benefit analysis. And we believe that the cost of having additional employees to segregate key functions and strengthen controls is a benefit to the department and to the city. And so the department concurs with this recommendation. The division is actually seeking a request for proposal for a consultant to review a comprehensive business plan. So this task of conducting that full-time equivalent analysis is included. Okay? Next slide, please. Missing documentation. Again, we noted a significant amount of instances in which the information was just not available. And because it's not available, we can't make a determination of whether the transaction took place or not. We get the sense that it's more of a filing issue. The transaction did take place, because we could take a look at some backup records, but it wasn't complete. So the lack of missing information doesn't really provide for an audit trail for someone else to come on the back end and be able to review these transactions. And that's very important in this type of department. So we highly recommend that the department ensures that the documents are retained in a timely manner and easily retrievable. A lot of the information that we did request was retrievable, but it wasn't an easy process. So developing an electronic system to store this information, scanning, document management, might be an ideal approach. We know it's not going to happen overnight, but maybe long-term training gets incorporated into the department's plan. Okay? And again, the department concurs with this recommendation, and the division will be designing an electronic filing system where the documents are retained and available for retrieval. Okay? Next slide, please. Recommendation number six, staff training. This is what we believe to be the underlying theme of why there are so many exceptions. We identified a number of instances of cash reconciliation forms not being completed properly, or they're not being reconciled timely by the division staff. And again, when we take a look at what's going on within the division, we talk to different people, we do get a sense that they are overwhelmed. And so as a result of that, adding additional responsibilities delays other things. And so we're recommending that the department implement specific training to ensure that all staff that's handling and completing these forms completely understand what's needed to be done and completing it properly, because that's going to be important to ensure that what they've done and they've moved on to that next phase is appropriate. You don't want any opportunity for someone to come back and say, hey, you know, there's missing money, you didn't fill out the report properly, and so we have concerns. But so the department concurs with this recommendation. They did cite that due to a high turnover rate at the scalehouse operators and with limited staff, continuous training is not always available. But they will make a conscious effort to ensure that training is adequate before people are taking on that role and responsibility. Okay? Next slide. So actually, there was one more recommendation. If you review our report, we've had a total of seven. However, we've reported six here. That last recommendation really was redacted, and it was done really for security purposes. The recommendations were related to security of the facility, and with input from the city manager, as well as the police department, we collectively felt that if that information was included here, it would put the security of staff and the department at risk. So the department clearly understands what that recommendation is. City management clearly understands what that recommendation is, and they agree and will be addressing that. But for the purpose of public presentation, that has not been included in our report or in this summary slide. Okay? So I wanted to point that out, since there are seven total recommendations. So conclusions. As I mentioned earlier, the underlying theme seems to be new staff, significant turnover, creating these challenges for the division to operate effectively and efficiently. The audit identified multiple opportunities for the ER Division to improve the cash handling operations and minimize the risk of theft or error in cash handling. And lastly, the lack of documentation for certain audit procedures performed did not allow us to quantify, you know, what is the extent of these errors? We weren't able to do that. And in this type of audit, it wouldn't be appropriate to try and to, what we consider to be extrapolating those errors. So with that, in concluding, I want to thank the ER Division management, Todd Housley, his team. They were very cooperative. I want to emphasize that. Very cooperative in opening themselves, opening the books of the department and sharing information. They welcomed these recommendations. They welcomed this audit. And so we couldn't have gotten this audit completed without their support and contribution. So I wanted to point that out. I know that was a very summarized report, but if there's any specific questions I can help answer, I'd be happy to do so for the council.
Okay, thank you very much for your report. And Madam City Clerk, we don't have any speaker cards on this, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. I don't have right now, let's see here, just checking. I don't have any questions by any members of the council. Yes, Councilman Perello?
Yes, I just one question. Yeah, the gentleman is absolutely correct. He's a fast talker. I appreciate that. And the Finance and Governance, it was an excellent report at the committee. But I just have one question that's come up, and I didn't ask it before. When GARTA picks up the money, does the money go to the Treasury Department? Or does the money go to a bank? And how often do we check that GARTA, how long does the money stay with GARTA's trucks before it gets to its final destination, wherever that is?
That's a great question. When we reviewed the process for cash collections, we didn't really have any concerns from the Treasury Department. We met with the Treasury Department as well to ask those questions. And so the concern really wasn't when GARTA gets it. From our analysis and what we've seen, there really wasn't a specific concern of the timeline from when GARTA picks it up to drop it off. There are controls in place to ensure that if the Environmental Resource Division says, hey, a deposit is going, the Treasury Department knows that they should be expecting a deposit. So based on conversations that we've had from both departments, Environmental Resource, as well as the Treasury, we had no concern. So we didn't specifically audit that process. And the first part of your question was, does the cash go to the Treasury Department? Yes, it does. And this was a comment actually brought up by one of the finance staff as why doesn't cash go directly to the bank? And that's a great question. Because of the control laps that we see with the Environmental Resource Division, we felt that it was prudent to at least go to a different department first so that they could screen before it gets deposited to the bank. Ideally, you would cut that process out, right? The cash would go directly from the Environmental Resource Division straight to the bank, and you would have that trail available. But because of what we've seen, the walkthroughs that we conducted, we felt that it was much more prudent to see improvement in the process before that process gets eliminated, cash going to the Treasury first.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very clear answer. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thanks for your report.
Thank you very much. And any additional council comments of any kind?
I would like to say something very quickly. I want to thank our, if I can, I want to thank our auditors. They always do a great job. And it seems like a lot of our issues come down to lack of staff. And our current staff stretch thin, so we don't have the ideal situation. But I do want to thank the staff of Environmental Resources, because as we saw in one of the slides that our city manager presented, we do thank them for taking care of all of the waste of the city. It's a big job. It's, right now, it's dangerous even more than normal. So I'm looking forward to a time when we get our revenue... we get our revenue a little bit back in better shape and we can enhance staff. But meanwhile, it's not exactly about the audit, but the community can do more to help reduce the load of our environmental resources by not dumping illegally, by making sure you put the right things in the right bin. And we're still trying to recycle despite, you know, the setbacks and that. So I want to thank Henry for hanging in there. You're in Fresno, right?
Yes, I am.
Stay safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional council comments? With no additional council comments, I'd just like to say, as the Chair of the Finance and Governance Committee, that we can't forget the origin of why issues like this were looked into. Let's first start with the fact that several years ago, under the previous city manager, it was talked about and even somewhat debated whether or not the city of Oxnard would have a independent auditor. So when I say an independent auditor, an elected independent auditor. And so the compromise was not to have an elected independent auditor, kind of like counties do, but rather have an independent auditor hired as this firm has done. And then issues were identified by them that they deemed to be, you know, of the highest potential risk. And of course, one of those other areas was overtime. So they've looked into a variety of issues. And what this is all about is the following is a decade ago, there were a lot of, and going back decades, there were decisions that a person could say safely that were not consistent with the values of public service at end of discussion. And so what this auditor, by looking into some of these areas, has more or less confirmed is that there's no criminal wrongdoing in the cash handling. That's really the message here. There's no criminal wrongdoing in the handling of the cash. There are inconsistencies, as Mayor Protem said, a lot of times, you know, the major of all of our I'm sorry. Hello? I hear talking. Okay. So in any event, I'm sorry. So in all of this, what this is all about is, is that looking at various areas where even a possibility exists for either fraud or theft or abuse, and the conclusion is it's not here. It's not in Environmental Resources. It's not in the cash handling. And yes, we have to address these staff issues and make it even more airtight so that there's not the possibility that that can ever happen again. So that really is a lesson learned from this report. And I want to thank Mr. Odom and the, and the audit. And it did come before the Finance and Governance Committee, and we supported it unanimously. So thank you very much for that report. And the only action here is to receive and file this report. So no action is taken. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then next, let's see.
Thank you, Henry.
Thank you very much. And so next then, Mr. City Manager, we'll go back to item one. Item one is under the City Clerk's Department. This is on page five. And this is, the subject is ordinance authorizing electronic filing of campaign disclosure statements. The recommendation is that the city council introduce for the first reading an ordinance, adding subsection C, quote, electronic filing of campaign disclosure statements, end quote, to chapter two, article six, section two through two forty-seven of the Oxford City Code to make the necessary findings and adopt regulations allowing for the electronic and paperless filing of campaign finance disclosure forms. And we will have the city clerk give a presentation on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you and the Mayor Protem and the city council. There's no PowerPoint for this one as it's a fairly basic item. I have for your consideration an ordinance that would allow the city clerk's office as the local filing official for the FPPC. That, as you may know, stands for Fair Political Practices Commission, to receive electronic filings of reports and forms using a software product from our current vendor, Granicus. So you're all familiar with these forms. There's the annual statement of economic interest, which is also known as the Form 700. And then the various campaign-related forms, the 501, the 470, the 410, the 460, the 495, the 497, just to name a few of the most common forms. These forms aren't exactly fun to fill out, but the ordinance before you this evening would allow for electronic filing of campaign statements, which makes life a little easier for everyone involved, namely the filer, the filing official, and the public who can view the submitted forms online. You're probably already aware that we moved to electronic filing for the Form 700s last year. Now with two filing cycles almost under our belt, we're happy to report that most of the filers have embraced electronic filing. And we actually receive very few paper-based forms anymore since implementing the new system. And now we're hoping that the convenience of electronic filing will be appreciated by the treasurers of campaign committees for the upcoming election and those in the future. And of course, those who are not comfortable with electronic filing always have the option of filing a paper copy. As you can imagine, many cities across the state are moving in this direction. And by adding this efficiency, it helps bring Oxnard into the modern age as well. And the reason this requires an ordinance is because the state government code mandates that a city or county adopts an ordinance to codify the acceptance of electronic filings. So if you're in agreement with this request, the action for tonight would be for you to introduce this ordinance, which is titled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oxnard, California, Adding Subsection C: Electronic Filing of Campaign Disclosure Statements" to chapter two, article six, section two dash two four seven of the Oxnard City Code regarding electronic and paper methods of filing campaign disclosure documents. Campaign finance disclosure statements. Sorry about that. And it would come back to you on your June second regular meeting for second reading and adoption. I do have to make unfortunately a slight correction to the agenda report. The financial impact section states that there was no financial impact. However, there is an annual cost of $7,227 for the software service, which has been included in this year's budget and will be included in future budgets. So I apologize for that oversight. And this will be corrected in the agenda report for the ordinance adoption, should this move forward. And now I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we have no speaker cards. And are there any quick questions on this item?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
With this $7,000 fee, will this be something that will be added for a filing fee when a person wants to run for office to try to recover this for the city?
No, there's no charge to the users.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions? What's the pleasure of the council?
Move the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion, Madam City Clerk, from Councilman Prillo, in the second.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem. The vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Prillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Madrigal.
Yes.
The motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to item three on page six of the back of the agenda. Subject is a contract with the audit firm for annual financial audits and single audits for federally funded programs for fiscal years 2019, 2020 through 2023 to 24. Recommendation is that the city council award agreement number, and it doesn't have the agreement number, maybe we can find out what that is, to Edie and Payne LLP for a federally five-year agreement in the amount of $1,075,100 for the annual financial audits and single audits for federally funded programs. This went to the Finance and Governance Committee. It was approved three to zero. Kevin Riper, please, Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council. So we're transitioning from the next to last item, which was the internal audit firm of Price Page, now to the external audit firm of Edie and Payne, both the incumbent and the recommended new awardee of a five-year audit contract. Mayor, you asked about the agreement number. We didn't know the agreement number at the time that the agenda was published, but we do now. Alas, I haven't memorized it, but it'll be memorialized in the document. I have assured the city clerk. An RFP was issued in February for independent financial auditors because Edie and Payne's five-year contract was up with the submittal of the single audit report that they presented to you last month. In the week leading up to the issuance of the RFP and in the days following the issuance of the RFP, the Purchasing Division, the CFO's office, and the Controller all approached California audit firms, encouraging them to respond to the city's RFP. We made a fairly aggressive effort seeking audit firms. Only got two responses. One was from the incumbent, Edie and Payne, and the other from Brown Armstrong in Bakersfield. And a six-member evaluation team was formed to review and score the proposals and make a recommendation to the first, the Finance and Governance Committee, and then the full city council. The evaluation team felt that both firms were qualified. They had qualified staff. Either one could do the job and they could do it from their locations remote from Oxnard. The evaluation team felt that Edie and Payne had an edge on audit experience with cities facing some what we call accounting and financial distress. Edie and Payne's proposed audit plan was also much more realistic than Brown Armstrong's, probably because Edie and Payne's much more familiar with the city of Oxnard. Brown Armstrong had the lowest cost proposal, so they scored max points for cost. The combined scoring for the two proposals appears on this slide. And you can see at the next to last line, the Brown Armstrong with max points of thirty-five for lowest cost and Edie and Payne, a somewhat higher price, scored only twenty-five points. But on experience and credentials and resumes and technical capability and project methodology, Edie and Payne had a high enough cumulative total to overcome the cost edge for Brown Armstrong. Hence, the recommendation of Edie and Payne for another five-year contract. Edie and Payne and their proposal committed to not to exceed amounts for the audit for each of the five years in question. Little over $200,000 a year for a total of $1,075,000. That's thirty percent less than the city spent with the same audit firm for the same time period, the prior five years. That brings us back to the recommendation. But before Hong Nguyen, who's one of the two partners Edie and Payne has assigned to the city's engagement for the first year and is ready to answer questions, and before I take questions, Mayor Flynn, oh, and the city clerk is showing me the agreement number. Mayor Flynn and Chair of the Finance or Governance Committee. It's Agreement A 8223.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Before we take questions, Mayor, did I leave anything out? You were able to participate in the first part of the evaluation session. Is there anything you want to add before we take questions?
Well, I just, I was part of the process and, and the COVID-19 situation developed and I wasn't able to go to the final selection meeting. So I regret that. But I told Mr. Riper when he called me and explained how and why Edie and Payne was chosen for the five-year agreement, that I supported his decision. I have confidence in him as the chief financial officer of this very large, almost half-billion-dollar-a-year corporation, public corporation. And I think that Edie and Payne has served us well, and I think they'll continue to serve us well. And I would have liked to have been involved in the second stage of the process, but wasn't able to do it because of the, some of the restrictions of COVID-19. I can't remember exactly what happened, but that's it. That's all I have to say about it. And there are no speakers. So comment cards, so I'd like to ask any other member of the council. I don't have any messages indicating that they'd like to speak on this item.
I would.
Okay, Mayor Protem.
Just very briefly, I would support this. And I would say that generally speaking, it's good to do an evaluation after we've had, or any institution has had an auditor for a certain period of time. And we've had Edie and Payne through a lot of our trials and tribulations and they have not been easy on the city. They're not, no slouches. They, they tell us what we need to do. So I'm, I'm comfortable with them continuing. I think it is while more, slightly more costly, it is of great value to the city. And I, I think at some point, we will have to transition, probably. It's not good to get too entrenched with your auditor for any, anyone. But I do support this. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Yes.
Councilman Prillo.
Yes, I appreciate the, the report. Mr. Riper, again, fantastic job. It was mentioned that the, and I had asked questions about how long you stayed with an auditor. And it was mentioned, the concerns are if you have a relationship with a senior auditor doing the work. And that is something that we don't have a concern here. We are watching how this works out. One point I want to make is we have prices for the five years not to exceed. There may be times when we do not even come close to that cost, but we haven't, it's not to exceed. Those are not guaranteed payments per year. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And again, thank you very much. I support this. I know I've asked some very hard questions of these auditors and they've stayed with us and they've answered. And they've done us a good job to this point. And I expect them to continue doing us a good job. It is good that we are getting a lot of the, it's tremendous that we've come through the bad days that we have and we're getting into a lot better situation. And I want to thank the auditors.
Thank you very much. And with no additional questions, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move the recommended action.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, we have a motion by Councilman Prillo in the second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lopez.
Councilmember Prillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Madrigal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Basua.
Aye.
Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ramirez.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to the last report in the last item on the agenda on page six. And this is under the Public Works Department. Subject, fiscal year 2020 to 2021, Landscape Maintenance Districts, Initiation of Proceedings, Declaration of Intention to Levy and Collect Assets, Assessments, and Scheduling of Public Hearings. Recommendation is that the city council approve and authorize, number one, the mayor to adopt a resolution initiating proceedings for the annual levy and collection of assessments for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 within the city of Oxnard's City Landscape Maintenance Districts, LMDs. Number two, the mayor to adopt a resolution declaring intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 within the city's landscape maintenance districts pursuant to the Landscaping Lighting Act of 1972. Number three, the mayor to preliminarily approve the annual engineers' report. Or mayor to preliminarily approve the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget for each landscape maintenance district. Number five, the city clerk to public notice of a public hearing to occur on June 2nd, 2020. And number six, city manager to take appropriate and necessary action to carry out the purpose and intent of the resolution. And the presenter, I believe, is our Public Works Director, Rosemary Gaglione. Perhaps?
Not quite. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Adam Smith, Project Manager and Interim Special Districts Manager. The recommendation tonight is, as you stated, to adopt a resolution initiating proceedings for the city's LMDs, to adopt a resolution declaring the intention to levy, to preliminarily approve the annual engineers' report, as well as a budget for each LMD. After tonight, the city clerk will publish notice of a public hearing that we have planned for June 2nd council meeting. And then finally, for the city manager to take appropriate and necessary action to carry out the resolution. So the little background, the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 governs the city's landscape maintenance districts. And it requires an annual city council action to update the tax assessments. Similarly to previous years, council adopts a resolution to initiate these proceedings and as well as a resolution of intention to levy, just like previous years, and to set that public hearing for June 2nd. So with the approval of the resolutions, it'll order the preparation and filing of the fiscal year 21 Consolidated Engineers Reports, Engineers Report, which is in your packet. It's a little too large to post, but we have it in your packet and online. Preliminarily approves the LMD assessments of all thirty-six throughout
online. Preliminarily approves the LMD assessments, all 36 throughout the city, sets that public hearing for June 2. The city clerk will post notice 10 days prior to the date of the hearing, which we will achieve, and then declares the intent to levy and collect assessments for the districts in the upcoming fiscal year.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Mr. Smith. Mayor, egregious mistake on my part. I need to recuse myself from this, from this item. I have, I live in a landscape maintenance district. I apologize.
Okay?
Okay, moving forward. So there--
So if I can just chime in. So in the past, when this issue's come up, Councilmember Prell, we've discussed that you live in one of the districts out of, what is the wrong number we have?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six different districts, different neighborhoods in the city. And if there were to be any, you can certainly recuse yourself from the vote as to that particular district, and you can note it. And if there is any discussion on this item that begins to focus on your district, then you would step away from the monitor and recuse yourself from that and not participate in that discussion.
Okay, then, on the advice of the council, I will do that. I need to give a heads-up. District 13, I'm involved. I live in District 13.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. I wanted to touch on the general benefit, which is a quantification that we put on each LMD throughout the city. And basically, what the general benefit is, it's a benefit that's received from the public at large, resulting from the maintenance activities provided by the LMDs and the amenities that they have. Ongoing maintenance activities provides a benefit to not only the properties within the LMD, but also as well as visitors and people passing through the LMD. For instance, like a park that might draw someone from outside the district to visit. So the amount of general benefit that's provided cannot be funded via the property owner's assessments, and must therefore be quantified and funded by the general fund. Similarly, there's utility caps. Each LMD, when they were formed, were created with utility caps, which limits the percentage by which each district, for purposes of paying their utilities, can be increased. So regardless of the utility rate or the usage increases, the LMDs can only increase their utilities based on a formula set forth in each individual district's formation documents. So a good example is if the utility rate increases by 10% in one year, but that district is limited to a 5% increase, then the general fund would have to pick up the difference of 5%. This upcoming fiscal year, it's estimated that the general benefit contribution, based on the expenses for the districts, totals approximately $93,000, and an additional $158,000 to offset the estimated utility overage. So grand total for fiscal year '21, the general fund contribution would be approximately $252,000 for all of the 36 LMDs throughout the city. And this contribution estimate includes a subsidy for the Cameron Ranch LMD, which is currently underfunded. And with that, just circling back to the recommendation again, so adopting the resolution, initiating the proceedings, the resolution declaring the intention to levy, approving the attached engineer's report, the budget, fiscal year '21 budget for each LMD, city clerk posting the public hearing that will occur in two weeks' time on June 2, and the city manager to take any appropriate and necessary action to carry out the resolutions. And with that, I am open to questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. And I have no speakers on this item. Are there any questions by members of the council? I don't have questions that have been submitted. With no questions that have been submitted, what's the pleasure of the council on the item?
Move the recommended action.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, we have a motion by Mayor Protem. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. And a second by Councilmember Lopez. The vote, please.
Mayor Flynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Prell.
Yes, I will abstain from any action dealing with landscape District 13.
So noted. Councilmember Madrigal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Basua.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez.
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries six to zero, except for LMD 13, which is five to zero to one, with Councilmember Prell abstaining.
Thank you very much. And that's the last item of the evening. And wish everybody a great evening, and we'll see you in two weeks at the next council meeting.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.